Stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance. Okay, welcome to the November fourteenth meeting of the County Canada double planning board. Lot of new faces here, so let me introduce the people that does. Starting with Korean hatch, who is our recording secretary. Tim Burkhardt is our remote access facilitator. We just Tim Schneider, our only board member, Mark Tolbert, board member, Scott Neal, board members. Amanda Van Laken, board members, Bob Lawrence, part board member, Chuck Euler. Or chairman, Kristen Smith, zoning officer, Lance Brayband, representing. MRB, our engineering group and Chris Nadler, our attorney. Okay, we're gonna. Got a little bit out of, out of the agenda, but for the most part, we'll follow the agenda tonight. If you didn't get one, there's one out front. Please sign in if you haven't signed in, so we have a record of your attendance. I do want to point out that we have two emergency exits. We have to leave the room or to the left. Our procedure is pretty basic. Well, when we come to night and on the agenda. I will open it up to the board to, well, first of all, have a presentation from the applicant as to. What they proposing and they'd like to have the board consider. I will then open it up to the board for comments and questions. I will then go to the general public for any comments, questions they may have. Either here or in virtual land and then we'll reconvene the board. And we'll hopefully make a decision this evening regarding the application of all things being equal. If you want to address the board, please come to the podium, give us your name and address. Please limit your presentation or discussion or comments to about three minutes. I don't think we have a lot of people here, so we, I don't see we're getting into redundancy too much, but. If someone has already brought up a point, please don't duplicate it. Once we've made a note of it, we're certainly aware of what your concern may be. Please address the board, not the applicant. And with all that being said. Let me first announce that. There are no legal notices for tonight's meeting since we have a continued public hearing and no new public hearings. Before we get into presentations, is there a, I want to talk about privileges floor. Which is for anyone who would like to address the board regarding anything on the, anything that's not on the agenda. If you want to bring something to our attention, Niles, the time to do so. If not, we will follow the agenda and proceed accordingly. Anyone out in the virtual land, have anything to bring to the board regarding privileges floor? If not. I'm going, as I say, I'm going to jump ahead on our agenda. And have a presentation. To the board, I think everybody'd be interested in. It's the German Brothers Marina incentive zoning requests. They have requested the town board to consider a rezoning. To allow for incentive zoning. They, that came in August. It was a public hearing of the town board in September. There'll probably be subsequent public hearings of the town board. But tonight is the planning board, we are here to hear a presentation from the applicant and. Consider and then hopefully recommend to the town board. Any things that we would like to see considered as part of their deliberations regarding the zoning request. So with that, Peter, Greg, I'll give you the floor. And if you want to give us a presentation, that'd be fine. While you're coming to the podium, I know there's been some new information submitted in the last couple of days regarding the incentive amenity. Position and that's new information, maybe the board and the public has not seen. So if you'd be willing to discuss that in a little more detail, I appreciate that.
Good evening, I'm Peter Brew. If you give me a little guidance, I'm not sure how to go in this, like I don't have my full presentation. So I'm not sure exactly how.
Well, I, I leave it to the board. We've seen a lot of information regarding this application. Some of us did attend or zoom into the public hearings. And so we're familiar with that part of your project, basically what you're intending to do. But I, I do know there was some new information recently regarding the amenity incentive. Proportion that you had come up with, which was a request of the town board. And you have provided that, so I think that would be important information to share the seating. If you can do it at least orally, that would be fine.
So one of the things that was requested was specificity around the value of. The amenity that we're providing and the value of the incentives that we would receive. So that, that detail were given.
I think you had three phases.
Correct.
Okay, if you could go through each of those phases and the amenities incentives under each. That would be new information for this board.
So what's in each phase? There'll be no new detail, it's just kind of. Structured into a phase, if you will, and then we put some dollars around it, so. So phase one is the primarily associated with the slips, the public slips. That. But again, this, this would be the amenity that we're proposing to the town. There would be seven slips dedicated to transient public use. And one additional slip dedicated to the Cheshire Volunteer Fire Department Fire Boat. Those amenities are sixty-four thousand dollars a year. That would be recurring, so that's basically, no, I take that back, that's not per year. That's the construction cost of a slip, I think so, sorry. So it's eight thousand dollars per slip times eight slips, that's seven, sixty-five thousand dollars. And the. We are asking for a total of a hundred and fifty slips, so that would leave a hundred and forty-two slips. For Marina to rent at the capital cost of eight thousand dollars a slip is one point one. Million dollars, and that would be kind of the amenity would be sixty-four thousand given and one point one received. Phase two is the public lake access, which is sixty feet of frontage. At an approximately thirty feet deep. Estimated value of that is at eight thousand dollars a foot, a frontage foot times sixty feet is four hundred and eighty thousand dollars. And. There'll be a. A public, a small public launch watercraft, watercraft launch area, not. Motorized boats, they would be kayaks, stand-up paddle boards, et cetera. There would also be public restrooms that we would supply and install, and they would be open. Pretty much not in the winter, so summer, spring till fall. And those bathrooms at twenty-five thousand dollars a bathroom times three bathrooms. The estimated value of that amenity is seventy-five thousand dollars. So that makes. The phase two amenity value is six hundred thousand. Versus. In that phase would be the building of the restaurant with an estimated cost of one point three million. A ship store, ice cream shop, coffee shop at about a hundred and fifty thousand. Gets you to one point four five million. So phase two would be six hundred thousand in public amenities and one point four in incentives. Phase three. Is. We calling safety access management, which would be kind of cleaning up the road, West Lake Road. There'd be no parking for boats and trailers on the right away on the upland portion of the property. And we're going to provide a hundred and twenty-five public parking spaces. Safe ingress and egress for the various parking facilities. There'll be no parking at all on the lakeside shoulder of West Lake Road. That would be converted to an active shoulder. So. That active shoulder would be for walkers and runners and bikers, very busy area. The cost of that. Providing all the reworking to the land. This road, they're retaining walls, construction. Drainage, that's one point six, one point seven million, I'll call it. In construction costs to get that beast done, so that would be kind of the value of the amenity there. We also be providing access to a public trail. Kind of see that as far right there, it kind of winds up, that winds around, that would eventually connect hopefully to RSM. They develop up there, those can be to their trail, I mean, there's no, no amenity value associated to that. The. Incentive that we would receive in phase three, we would be building seven lodges. With an estimated capital cost of five million dollars. And that's twenty-four hundred dollars, a twenty-four hundred square, square feet per unit. About three hundred dollars per square foot times seven units. So phase three is one point six in amenities, five million in incentives. All wrapped up, two point three in amenities and seven point six in incentives. A lot of numbers.
Again, total amenities incentives.
Two point three, seven point six.
Point three million in amenities, seven point six in incentives.
I did discuss this with the applicant. But I don't need to be in. Updated safety, I know you had submitted it. Is it in the pilot permit? Did you get this map from there? No?
I got that from the.
Oh, maybe it's up really good on the website.
The document I'm referring to is in the AR report from Doug. Oh, that's where I saw it.
Can we make sure it gets on them?
So everything I'm reading was put up to pilot permit.
I know, I just don't think it's up there.
Well, is there a legal process that has to go through?
Well, keep things moving. Alright, so that's the split in amenities versus incentives dollar wise. I want to open it up to the board because we are obligated to report back to the town board as to our opinions. As to the application, what the developers proposing, not in detail in terms of. You know, where the buildings are located and all that kind of stuff, but I just, just sort of looking at the land use, environmental aspects. Those kind of things, so. I, I'd like to get some ideas from the board as to your feelings, so that we can prepare that. Or, or I can prepare, prepare that report as being represented the entire board, so.
Let me just tell you what the incentive zoning code says, it says the planning board. Will report with its evaluation of the adequacy with which the amenities slash incentives. Fit the site and how they relate to adjacent uses and structures. The planning board's review shall be limited to the impact of a proposed incentive zoning. On the planning, design and layout of the project unless otherwise requested by the town board. Still, everyone has that in the back of their.
Good, thank you. So, open it up to our board. Anybody have any comments that we can include in our report?
A question, how many, how many slips do you currently operate? To answer that question specifically is thirty-two, thirty, thirty-three slips. On the Marina and then the property to the south. So thirty-three to answer your specific question, but I do want to add some nuance to the answer. That it, it's not that we're going from thirty-three slips to a hundred and fifty slips. Because there's, in addition to the thirty-three splits, there's thirty-five moreings. That are there.
I'm just trying to understand how many boats you manage in the water, okay?
I can tell you that after all the puts and takes, because we have dry storage on the hill. You know, when I refer to that, that means.
Yeah.
So boats that we get, that we put in and out every, you know, when the customer requests. So if you. Some of those would be going into slips, so by the time you've put all these in and out, there would be a net increase of fifty boats. That would be. Potentially on the lake. Is that, and I can give you specific details on that.
In general, you're managing a hundred boats currently there.
A hundred and twenty boats today. That there's about seventy on the hill and about sixty in the water. So that gets you to a hundred and thirty, actually. But there's some, you said.
You said thirty-three slips, thirty-five ones.
Correct, and seventy dry storage.
That go in and out of the boat.
Correct.
You're proposing no dry sports?
Thirty dry storage, not to be kept on the property.
That was my, that was my follow-up question, because you said up on the hill, you're going to have. Seventy dry boats, would that take away from the public parking?
So the, the seventy votes are up here today.
Today, yeah, I know that, yeah.
And then, so no, there'd be no, there'd be no boats kept. On the land in the proposed.
Yeah, you threw me off when you said that there would be.
So that thirty, I'm hoping to be somewhere off-site and. One of the reasons that I can't do that today is. I don't have any docks to stage them, and so they say I'll be there at ten and they show up at ten thirty. Don't have a place to hold boats, but with the new dock point, I'll have a little spot to hold, kind of queue the boats. Would you eliminate dry stores at that point?
For day-to-day traffic, day-to-day usage?
At the location, at, at that physical location, you're eliminating.
Keep them off-site, so they stay on North Road and.
For some of you that maybe, maybe didn't attend the, the meeting. Pay very close attention to how many boats are used at any given time, the dry store to kind of get. Get a sense of usage. On the busiest days, I'm talking July fourth, later days again. The Sunday of last late day, it was one of the busiest we've had. Out of those seventy boats that are up there, eighteen are out. It was my month. So I, I just feel like so many people are on their boat, but that's, that's a busy day. I also counted cars that day, so I don't know if anybody heard that, there was seventy-six cars on the property that night. And we're posing in the, in the hundred and twenty-five range for parking spaces. And we'll admit that there'll be more boats there, because we have more docks, we mentioned potentially fifty. But if you use that, roughly twenty to twenty-five percent. People going out, they have a few, well, cars that might be there as well, users. And then also the restaurant, we draw traffic, so there would be additional parking. But I still have, I have fifty spots to, to tell them for all that. What is the estimated seating on the restaurant? The building is forty by forty. Existing, the exit, I'm sorry, that's the existing structure and it's intended to be two stories. So forty by forty is much smaller than it's room, but you can't get booking facilities and too many people in there.
They'll also have, so you have parking for the restaurant plus parking for the rental units.
Oh, yes, the red, you know, the cottages. When you say rental, you're thinking of rental boats, but yes, rental cottages, yes.
Oh, but also parking each other and rent the boats, so, yes, a hundred and twenty-five fills up.
I can tell you that day that was seventy-six, I had all my rentals out, so.
Phase one, you're talking about seven belt slips, my question is, two hour max means day. I'm going to dump my boat in, I'm allowed two hours and they're out.
A transient slips. It's a transient slip, yes, it's not meant for you to. So for you to come and use the restaurant or whatever you'd like to do in the area, it's not meant for you to keep your boat there forever.
Alright, and then in phase. Two, at the town expense. And with the applicant's design approval, the town will convert the current boat list into an over the water civilian. Also, it's public small watercraft, it's our expense as well as the town's expense.
Yes.
Highlighted in those.
Can the town spend money to improve private land?
Yes, but not in this case.
Not spending money. That's an ask of ours.
But that property would be subject to leasing to the town, so I mean, the, the town will have rights to that property. In terms of access and, so I guess. Whether we build it or he, the applicant builds it, that's, that can be a negotiation point, but. Yeah, the town would have access to these. I would think, right? No one else?
And that's a decision, by the way, for the town board to make, as to whether they're willing to grant a lease management. A hundred-year lease, ownership of the property, a two-year lease, a ten-year lease, that's just a policy decision for the town board to make. And I don't think they've, beyond the initial comments, town board members at the last town board hearing, I don't think they've. Considered discussed at the on that, at this point, I think. The applicant really provided a lot more meat to the proposal. Since the last town board meeting and it hasn't been considered publicly since that last meeting.
You have another question? You're phasing. Addresses the safety concerns. One season after all the boat slips go in. So based on what you said about seventy dry storage boats. If, if you're not doing dry storage anymore, does that free up area for people to park? Where that dry storage currently is until you get to phase three. And address the safety access and.
Being on the lake for several years now. A boater, seven slips. To the first restaurant, really, that you can go up to is not going to be enough in my opinion. I think you may have that option out at least something out of the case. I mean, we always talk about it, we're on the lake, there's nobody, no place to go. Now you're going to have a restaurant that you can go to.
I agree.
Okay, so I'm just saying, seven. Is a single, full load number for someone now coming in, oh, I can't go. I'm sure you may have an option to call and say, hey, take slip, whatever, but. Yeah, I think seven's a low number for access to the restaurant.
So I totally agree, I had to provide kind of a minimal number, I guess. If I provided none of them, it would look trumped up a little, so. Yes, I, I worry about that.
Yeah, I, I always have backup plans, so I would say if you have seven and then if you give up. If, if you had, you know, had to, so free spaces, I mean, I'm sure not a hundred spots or whatever they were. So. Can you call in and say, hey, you're all full, can I get in anyways? Is that an option? Or whatever, whatever, I mean, you got seven boats already in there, eating in your restaurant.
I'm hoping to have what I'm calling boat through. At, at the end of the dock that you can. If, if. I, I'm imagining that I'm not going to fill all the slips with renters on day one. So. That's going to take some time to fill that capacity, so in my mind, that capacity is going to be enjoyed by that surge. Let's go try this in the restaurant.
Well, that's, as long as, like, like you said, they have a backup plan and an option for the people that would like to come.
It's, well, I'll tell you, it's not my intention to rent all hundred and forty-two in your month. For that exactly.
Yeah, or your intention to turn people away.
I'm sorry?
Or your intention not to turn people away.
So if I could, some general comments, I think, having taken a look at the dock design. Maybe you've got some concerns with the dock, they've been built for the. For the project and for the nation and the province. If there were a way to almost turn that dock design inside out. To protect the neighboring properties against traffic. So that's one of the things, it's not shown here, but in the overall design, if you have. To, to keep the traffic away from the neighbors on the property, I think that would be an important. The last design that I saw as.
The last design, everybody pretty much going in. It's kind of, you're, you're inside.
So when I'm writing at the, this was in the presentation, most recent one that I've seen, you got access coming in and sides. To get to the two outer most set of, of docks. So I commend the designer getting the main, people traffic and things down the center. What you've got now, if you've got motor traffic, that's going to come down the shore to come into the side, and I do think that that creates a safety. There's a way. I think that might help, and I think that would also reduce some of the concerns from the neighboring areas. In general, keeping the traffic with a central traffic flow, allowing for two-way traffic in there will also do some traffic calming. We think, I think the traffic calming normally approached, but it has the same effect on, on the boating traffic as well. Related to traffic calming. In some ways, the higher density that we create there will slow everything down, which is not a bad thing on West Lake Road. So coming back out to the road, so I, it would be, and I don't know if there is a way to allow for widening in front of the property. And the perfect scenario would be if we have three-lane turn scenario, I don't know if there's room for that. But in general, I commend you on getting the boats, boat trailers off of the road, so a good job on that. And opening the gap for pedestrian traffic, I think that does work well. I do think that the parking options that are shown right now are going to create a challenge. Both in a limitation for the activities that are happening, happening in there. And also in things that we have to deal with the scenic issue. And what we have to allow for density, what we're supposed to allow for densities and things along those lines. So that would lead to a reduction of parking, parking, which then limits the rest of the problem. And it also likely leads to a reduction of, 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 of humans to, to try to achieve that in a different fashion. So that, that's just in terms that I would have related to that.
I also have a concern related to this general water quality. And just quickly on the traffic calming, we did speak to the county highway department. And they shared your concerns about less congestion would actually increase speed. They. They, I, I don't know how traffic calming would happen, but they did mention that some type of traffic calming would have to occur. And they said it could be something is. You know, we had like, you see the banners that are on, and stuff, just some little things like that. From what I understand, those kind of things give people. From what I understand, those kind of things give people the impression, oh, something's happening here, and then it naturally slows down. Yeah, for crosswalks, so that too adds to, um, some of that.
Yeah, generally, things like the news, obviously, they prefer that, which you can't do. Um, they'll they'll let it calm in fact, well, that obstructions, they get people to pay them, and that's help with them. Um, and, but I'm sure the town and county can help you with the traffic counts and calming suggestions there. Uh, so they can help with that.
Peter, maybe I can give color about the trailers. Being out of the way, but also not gonna get most ins and outs. When North Road, right, I can follow that. I think, so I think what Greg's referring to is that now, you know, I don't know if you travel that road a lot, but we're moving boats. In and out of dry storage with our tractors up and down that little stretch in front of there, so that all goes away, you know. Which, uh, probably have an effect on. Well, safety, also will look a lot nicer.
True. And then, I think, one of the, one other point that I do, I was just, and I started to mention this is on water quality. Um, that's obviously one of the most imperative parts of this project, and fully in support of projects that is a place to be done and prosecuted. And you don't have any like them. I would ask you to look at options to be able to do active water quality monitoring. Uh, and we talked to some folks about those type of things before. But it'd be great to know that the impact of this project is not having a negative environmental impact on the lake. And I think the only way we could achieve that is by some type of monitoring that allows us to track that.
A, a very small piece that's not so obvious is today, the service building and all the service actually. For hundreds of boats that we work on, having spring and fall, all come through that location, all that. Moves, moves off the lake, so even just, you know, natural rainfall and stuff that occurs onto oily boats. And all that goes away. And I, just that alone to me is a wonderful. Positive effect in the lake. And we do have plans for somewhere to run off and marine gardens. Hey, Mark, we sat down with the Canada Lake Watershed Association about two hours, a few weeks ago, great conversation, Peter, you wanna ladder that all? You know, so we. One of the reasons we talked to them is we're trying to kind of go to all the various stakeholders in the lake, um. And to hear what they have to say, um, and, um. They have, they handed us a, um, best practices for lakeside development that. Well, you've not been surprised to view in that, but it's our intention to fully, uh. Use all those best practices. That's Peter.
Be also the board. Alright, uh, I'm, I was looking at basically from a playing standpoint. Uh, the project, uh, certainly check this, make sure that it met or complied or tried to address the, uh. Uh, the incentives, not the incentives, but the the natural amenities that we're looking for from a project such as this, that applies with the comprehensive plan. And for the most part, I I think it does, and I don't think there's any, anything that's objectionable in terms of, uh, section two twenty thirty-one. All the various.
Just for a second, on this one? So, we have, uh, on page one seventy-one of the two thousand twenty-one comprehensive plan. There are called out eight items of strong interest to the community. Right, there was a three hundred ninety-nine people participated in that survey.
Yeah.
And there's categories one through eight, the first one strongest is lake access, I think you might imagine, right? And then it goes into the restaurant, it goes into trails, it goes into safe walkways, it goes into all of them. And we are eight for eight on that list, we've addressed all those, okay, on purpose, because.
That's what I was saying, right? I said it complies with the plan, so.
We're ready to do.
I'm agreeing with you, okay, alright, so I I I certainly, you know, acknowledge that and appreciate that. Uh, I think from a standpoint, this sort of does away with the non-conformities that exist there now. Yeah, for the R L D, I mean, that that property's been there forty-three years, I think you said, and it's been a non-conforming use, and it really isn't totally. In. Cooperation or compliance with the other residential properties that are around there, and I think. What we'd be doing with a project such as this to sort of wake this slate clean, starting all over, coming back to the project, it certainly would be. Uh, if done correctly, uh, and built properly and designed properly would be, uh, an asset and much better than what's there now. Certainly, as as was mentioned, the scenic view shed requirements would have to be met, and that would certainly be. Analyzed, uh, as we go through the the plan review process, our shoreline guidelines, I think. Because it is so visible from the lake, we would make sure that any, uh, any property that's seen from the lake would be in compliance with our shoreline guidelines. Um, stormwater management has been mentioned, that's something I think that will certainly help on this property also, because right now we have, as I call it, the big pipe. It's sort of splashing out on the county route sixteen, I think certainly as part of the project. All that uphill flow would be collected and controlled and and conveyed to the lake at a much, uh. Uh, safer and more environmentally positive way of doing things.
Earlier this year, one of my guys, I mean, it's locked, did they? Oh, we had one of those storms.
And it popped a cork somewhere?
And flowed on over the top and, um. It was not pretty, some of it ended up in the store, some of the water, small amounts, but.
But again, you're, I think as part of your your site plan review, it will certainly be taking care of that, um. There's some other detailed things I really don't want to get into right now, because I think we've spent too much time as it is, I think we have a pretty. Pretty good feeling from the board as to how they feel about this project, I, I think that our report should probably reflect that. Uh, given the property design and, uh, property controls, uh, that this project would be of value to the town. Uh, I, I, you went through the assets and the, or the amenities and the incentives, that's certainly something the town board. Will have to go back and forth and negotiate with the applicant on, uh, the. Dockings and moorings that will be a result of this project, uh, that's something that's controlled as part of our dockings and mooring law. And that would have to be certainly, uh, the project would have to be in compliance with that. Uh, you mentioned the fire slip for the fire department, certainly that's appreciated, I know the Cheshire Fire Company would appreciate that. Are you gonna have any fuel storage, uh, or, uh, for any reason on this property, are you, could boats pull up and gas up?
That remains.
Okay, so then there would be some concern about any existing underground tanks or new underground tanks that may.
Nothing new, we don't, wouldn't touch.
Okay, so the existing underground tanks would have to be probably inspected, and maybe they get through that inspection as it is, but. Certainly would want to make sure that, uh, as part of the construction, that the U D Ts would not be affected. Or in, yeah, in approach it anyway. The connection to the, uh, the trail at, uh, RMS, that's, uh. That's an asset, public restaurants, uh, that's certainly, I, I heard a lot at the hearing on the eighteenth, that people were always looking for a place to go. And this this would be part of that, so again, uh, not to take too much more time. If it's okay with the board, then I'll put together some sort of advisory report for the town board, I'll circulate to. You folks, you can read it, amend it, and, uh, if it needs everybody's approval, then we'll send it on. Okay? Alright, thanks for coming out today.
Thank you for, uh, honest to talk to me, I can greatly appreciate it. And if you have any questions as we go along in this process, this is not gonna be the first, last time we're gonna talk.
Or for.
So I wanna really brace up with you guys as high as we can get, make sure we limit this to the community.
Okay, thank you, thanks, Pete, thanks, great. Okay, and I thank you folks for putting it up with the, uh, going out of order. Alright, let's get back in order, um. Go back to the top of the agenda, we have a continued public hearing. Uh, for a property at twenty-eight ninety County Route Ten, our requesting a site plan approval, special use permit for. A fifteen acre plus solar farm in the industrial zone, as well as a waiver from our special use permit rule about fifty-foot buffer. Uh, I will open the hearing and turn the, turn the board over to our vice chairman, Mr. Of course, to continue the hearing.
Hi. Hi, I'm Terry Ross, and we've got here is Great Energy, from the energy, it's nice to meet all the person. Uh, so, here. I I think, I think my, uh, that's what your purchase is, do you show what's different from last time? A lot of, uh, people, we've done our best to get us some also a lot. A lot of the. Yeah, you can zoom in just a little bit in this area. It's sites, they're possible to zoom in kind of in the inner for. Perfect, so, um, the request was to add additional screen to try and come closer to the fifty-foot variant, so. Oh, down here, if you check the original, um, row of trees in front, both these rows down as far as we could, so we could get. Fifty foot setback here, but then we had no more rooms, and we figured off and added some additional screen in there. So, these are double rows of trees, they're sixteen to eighteen feet, um, out planting, and they spread out to thirty-two or thirty-six feet. Uh, yeah, whole road, very solid, and then anywhere where we don't have rows of trees, we're gonna do their wildflower mix in front of it. Same as here on the front, we have the double row trees, we have a screen all the way up to the property line, sorry, wildflower mix at the property line. Um, the one area we ran into problem with is, is this second here is, uh, belongs to the landowner. So, they have a workshop and a shed, and they have a circular driveway, um, it's grass there, and. In discussion with the landowner, you know, they're, they're okay with us putting, you know, extra row trees through through their property, but. You know, they wanna keep the driveway, they store trailers here and here, so, um, we have a little bit of accommodation there. So, instead of just the two fifty feet, we got a additional screen further back here, or wildflower mix and then the pools. Um, so we came, we've come close to what you've asked for, we couldn't quite do it, um, um, why don't they just do the, the, um. Extractions of the site, uh, being a small site, and what that is, and that, they have a chance to look in, in. The line, there are a bunch of trees, twelve screen are ready, but you know, we don't have to go over that, so. Um, we'll do our best as we can, uh, on on our side of events. So, we al- we also, I get dressed a bunch of other questions as well, so there's a submission on on the noise study, um, very technical, and I think it addressed most of the comments. Uh, we made changes to, we're clarification on the row and the permeability. We updated our definition plan to include, uh, comments on the middle of all, all things, and food, vegetables, screening, um, you know, and us. Through by both landowner and the, uh, the sound, that kind of definition. Um, there's one, um, omission that I was made that I thought we'd invest on the one end plan, and that was the snow removal, um, uh, note, so. Um, our, our operating, each of all of our operating partners right now, is if there's more than four inches of snow, then you have a snow problem, it must be problems. It's like the values and any of these things.
That can be added as a condition for this.
Sure, um, definitely. Did I cover most of the, the users?
Yeah, I think that's, yeah, unless everyone has.
Um. You guys ever, what, who's the board member?
You are in compliance with light coverage, right?
Yes.
Yeah, this. Yeah, on the resolution, it's.
Yeah.
Both were, like, I said, okay. So, the question is, do we need to make, um, thank, um, just a second. Uh, do we need to make motion on the waiver as it is now, or does it was a waiver for? Um, basically not to have a fifty foot, or can we take and then amend it accordingly?
Say that again?
Okay, so they requested a waiver from the fifty-foot offer, you know. Um, and that was, what we talked about the other day was, you're not, you don't want it all off, but that's what you said in the waiver. But so you really wanted to go back to what you had in the plan with possibly what we talked about, it's changes. So, the way it was written was, they want a waiver from the fifty foot, so do we need to take motion on that? And, or just make a motion that we're gonna amend that, uh, to what we want?
I like that, but.
Yeah, that's easier, I think.
Well, sir.
Um, so I'll ask you, why, why can't you get fifty feet? You stayed with the exact same depth all the way around.
Oh, oh, why could it progress in that?
On the front and on the sides, I mean, it's, I think it's eighteen feet, I think, or twenty-nine feet.
You know, part, mostly it is, is, you know, the strategy is nowhere else to put the panels and, and, you know. Reduce the panels would make the project un-unviable, um, plus there's also a lot, necessitated a lot of. Trees, screening and similarities.
Yeah, we agree with that, and then I noticed there, you put more all the way down the south side, which is, um, not.
Okay, um, so the smaller trees, the dogwoods, was they are, that's sort of beyond, that's not necessary?
That wasn't what we discussed.
Okay.
The other day, that was additional when I saw that.
Okay.
Um, I saw, it was like, oh, that's.
I think, I think we added that back earlier in the summer, um, as a way of finding. Peace.
Do do our, do our best to to meet at least the.
I I kind of thought that, but it was like, it doesn't do anything to help the, you know, the view shed. Uh, mainly, mainly all the times I've been on that road to look at that, um, there's a lot of trees there, a lot of shrubs there right now.
I do also wanna add, there was consideration to extending the landscaping property, you'll see that there's a bit of space between the trees and the property line here. There is a water main that comes down the roadway here, and just as a reminder, everyone, everyone, I was in the last meeting, um, just to make sure that people are aware that that is why there wasn't. Additional landscaping place there, obvious concerns of, you know, damage to the water line over time. Um, but you'll notice this cyan color here, that's all wildflower mix, which we're putting across in parasite two, so that should be a pretty attractive. Landscape screening with the dogwoods, flowering dogwoods in front of the other tree that we brought.
What is your planting height gonna be?
The, the height of the plantings, um, it is on the site, um. So, at planting. The height will be installed, uh, by feet, um, for all the plantings. So, in five, the plantings grow, so there's two different ones here, there's a gray dogwood and a natty berry, are the two different plantings. Um, they grow about one to two feet a year in spread and height. So, in five years, they'll be about ten feet in height, and then completely grown, and so there will be a very, very dense, you know. Landscape screening from.
I think you had a rendering of that.
We do, um.
Yeah, we saw, yep, there you go.
Yeah.
Yep. It's five, ten years.
Yeah, five, five years out is when it'll be completely dense, and it'll steep right from there, hopefully, it didn't be twenty years, where I re- matured.
Um. Okay, so let's just move on from that for now.
Okay.
Um. Uh, back on the general notes on the page, uh, I think it was the first page. We talked about, uh, it says that the contractor will consult with the design engineer before deviating. We talked about that I wanted to have, at least you need to talk to the town of Canadega also. But I'd like to see those words in there, uh, there's so many plans that we've seen lately, that I have seen, uh, plans changed, and, uh. How never gets involved until the last minute, when it's already done. I think in general notes, um.
Cheats easier there, one.
Number four.
Number two.
Yeah, just, if it could be changed, that the contractor shall consult the design engineer and the town of Canadega before.
Okay.
Can you change it in there, or does it need to be a condition?
No, we can.
We're, we're organized condition.
Attention.
Just let, make it a condition.
Yeah.
If you tell Lance what it is, he could send me writing down one that I.
Yep.
Suggesting.
So, we will submit and update it, all the conditions here tonight will be updated, uploaded to the cloud program system, they're correct?
Yeah, yeah.
Well, I'd say we send that as our big firm application, right? With a note saying, putting out all the conditions that were met.
What was, yeah, what was the branch for the? What was, what was that, was the note, was that a question?
No, no, it was on the basic site plan.
Okay.
General notes, number four, site plan. Um. Yeah. That one's okay, I'm trying to go down my list that we did other than, other than that, um. I mentioned last time, we're in my notes app, you know, we had an eight-foot fence. The code is seven, you took that as a negative, I don't know why, I said it was a good thing, that you exceeded it. But I just want to let you know, I mean, that, that, for me, that was a good thing that you exceeded the code at seven, it's an eight-foot fence perimeter, uh, so, no issues on that. Pardon?
Keep the zeros.
Yes, yeah, good luck. Yes, yeah, good luck. Um. Yep, yep. The. I read the noise test again. Um. On another condition, Lance, I would like to, because you don't have the data sheets on your motors, your panels and all that, when you get them. I, we'd like to have them submitted to the town.
Sure.
As part of the package, please.
Sure. Uh, to be fired here. Um, for approval by the county engineer.
When in your process, do you think that's going to be?
That, that will come with, we can, we should be listening to that.
That'd be good. That would be the panels, motors and the inverters, right? Just to make sure. Um. The missing thing. Now you talked about the row changing. How did you change that? Can you talk about that a little bit? The access?
The access. So nothing changed. There was a comment made about access. Um. Yeah, so we're actually tying into. This existing accent driveway. So what you're seeing here with the color H E difference, because there was a comment made about that. It's just that this is the new area of driveway that would be compacted gravel. So I think this is existing, um, asphalt driveway. We're going to, is it gravel? Okay. I can't, I went to the site, I cannot remember. So we're just going to be tying to that. And, uh. The access, we're actually not. But I think that there will be need for, um. We'll think of, pay the apron.
Right.
I think the county will require that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, but we're not necessarily going to change the, the two driveways. This, this, what we were delineating, I guess in our plan, we didn't give it point to that, which is. That we are, this is existing and this is proposed, but. We are going to be, as we noted here, the apron will be placed. Uh, and I think that's a thirty foot apron, that number, thirty foot.
Yeah, from the edge of road to at least the right away.
Okay, right.
Is that road, your access going to be purview or non-purview?
Um, typically we do side.
Not. Yeah, so that doesn't add into your block coverage.
I mean, that's a, the, it's fine, but to, typically we do it in terms of construction, but typically we do it in.
And it would comply with, uh, New York State, uh, fire code, road access.
Yes, yeah, okay. That's what you, you're actually, right, and there, that's, that's part of that turnaround appointments from under the fire code. So it all, it meets all of our.
Um. That's all I had on site plan. So decommissioning plan, we moved to that really quick, um. Um. I, I don't know if I'm comfortable, but I don't think Kevin Foster is going to be around in thirty years.
No.
So I, I'd like to at least have an office email. Or a point of contact that be available to the town at all times instead of call Kevin in thirty years or twenty five years or. Cause Kevin's telephone numbered and I don't even know him.
Um, maybe the best way to do that is, is what we would do is would buy you a list of construction contacts and before the bunch starts. And then before operations, I'll probably with our operational contacts, and that would be the, the same as, as, you know.
Yeah, that's, it was just given somebody, us a contact for somebody, so, so, yeah, we would just need to have.
Does Kevin have a title?
He's a, he's a director of construction.
Well, maybe, okay.
Uh, but, but you know, the, I guess he said he is a.
It will be around for decommissioning now.
You know, just, uh, unless, it'd be unlikely, we're, we're to start construction and then, you know, if that were to happen, you would die in fact, but that's.
Yeah, alright, yes.
Need a point of contact.
Yeah, a good, solid, not Kevin.
Well, and what that needs to be in, in a, well, not right now, and it doesn't have to be conditioned, but. Is the O and M plan and the decommissioning plan is contact information. Those are the things that are recorded at the town clerk's office that. And, you know, when the zoning inspector reviews annually, they should be checked. Yeah, you have to update it, yeah. Do you actually just do that in that report?
Uh, yeah, typically that's how it is done. If there's any changes, you can do updates.
Should it email to the town?
Yeah. Good.
There's also a emergency number.
Oh, yeah.
Do you hear that, Bob?
No.
Have an emergency number on the gate.
Oh, good. Not Kevin's, right?
Summer's eight, six, seven, five, three, oh, nine. Sounds like it. Taking a lot of calls.
I'm going to bypass the security bond for a second, get right to, uh, page six, two point one, number eight, how deep? Uh, the. Cables are going to be buried?
Yes.
Now you never, it, it, you kind of made a statement here that said. Well, if it's under forty eight, it has to be pulled, but if it's under or over forty eight, it's kind of a generic. But a decommissioning plan in my mind is solid.
Yeah, um, we, we don't have a stamp in here, designs, drawings, trees yet. That's, that's the next step, but. Our typical cable depths are, if, if they're within the array of twenty four inches, then from. The end of the array to the, uh, inverter box is thirty six inches. Then the cables from the inverter box out to, they're going underground where the full cluster is. Um, it's either going to be thirty six or thirty eight.
So can we just say that, uh, all buried cable will be removed?
Yeah.
And that means just simply, and there's none to leave anything, oh, you know, it's forty nine inches, we're going to leave it. So, yeah, I'd like to just say if it's, if they're buried, take it out. That'd be great.
Well, hey, because I think we actually did make that. He did address all the ones.
I, I, you may have, I missed it, may have missed it, I, I read it again. Page six, two point one, number eight.
I just want to make sure if you didn't.
It's kind of still generic and.
Number, which number I have.
Eight, I have. May have changed on your new one.
Maybe we just say any, I see you're saying, rather than providing any numerical value.
Yeah, just, just buried cables will be removed. Great.
Also, I mean, moving.
Pardon?
On the most recent one that I see, there's a point nine that says anything else will be abandoned in place. So that note will come out.
Right, that would, you're definitely right, that'll come out. So there'd be nothing abandoned in place.
Okay.
Um. Operations, oh, decommissioning plan still, sorry. Your decommissioning plan for your surety bond. Hopefully Lance can help me on this one. You said your security bond was at the total amount at a thirty year maturity of the program. Which was three, 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 nine, oh, nine. I went to appendix C in your document, and appendix C shows a thirty year. At four sixty four, six ninety nine, plus ten percent at five eleven, one sixty. It's, uh, page. Appendix C in the ta- in the table.
We'll do another item while looking for that.
Sure. We'll go to the ops plan. Uh, I believe the ops plan, and it's mostly is good with the snow. MRBs responses. That is a condition already about you're going to have to comply with what MRB that came up with, which is perfect. Um. And, uh, editing anything else other than the snow, which you brought up already.
Okay, so the surety bond appendix C, is that the list of, that's, that's needed to be committed to. Will lose your, your comment on that?
You had said that. ASA Canada will post a security bond in the amount of approximately three, 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 three hundred and thirty three thousand, nine, oh, nine. Uh, which is the total amount at the project's thirty year maturity, see appendix C. So I went to appendix C. And it shows that the decommissioning bond at a thirty year was four sixty four.
Yeah, I think that that is, the, the four sixty four is correct. The three thirty three was not updated, so it's there.
Yeah, I think that was, that was associated with last. Ian's comments. Yeah, so, yeah, we're, we're, we're trying to go higher number.
Yeah, so is the high number five eleven, which you have on your table, or four sixty four?
So we have on the table, so decommissioning after thirty years is four hundred and sixty four, with the contingency ten percent, it's viable.
Right. So what number do we go with?
So.
Five eleven, five eleven, one sixty.
Okay, so this is thirty year goal.
Five eleven, five eleven, one sixty. Thanks. Those are. My main comment, um. Three foot, we talked about that. Oh, one other thing, I didn't realize. I may mention to it. We talked about, I thought about myself as a, uh, landowner here. Uh, great that landowner gets to choose the buffer material. Uh, and also. One other thing, the road. Uh, I would like to add also, and I don't know this guy, but the fence. As an option to remain.
Yeah, I'm sure.
Because two things would happen. That would save you money. And secondly, if he wanted to make that into something else, in a fence, he would have that option to do that. So if we could do that.
Why do we have to specify what could remain?
Because it's already specified in there. Twice for the road end, for the.
Specifically identified.
Specifically for the landscaping and the road.
I'd rather it just be generic, just be general that, because the procedure would be a request by the landowner at the time, and he wants to keep it, which could include. Things that are not identified in there, or, you know, and I don't know that we're in a position to sign now, but thirty years from now, we may change the agreement. So. I think my suggestion would be that we eliminate specifically what could remain. Just say procedurally that the process would be, the landowner would make a request to the town, and it would have to be approved by the town whenever that.
For what we're named.
Yeah, that's, that's, but. Better way to do it, I think.
Good, and we can change on your. Decommissioning, right? It's in the decommissioning plan, I believe, also.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's not in the, yeah, just, just. Um. Board, anything else? Public?
I just, the public.
I just want to clarify, uh, you did say the fence and the landscaping along the frontage is out of the waters, right?
Exactly.
The water, the water easies? That was a request of the, uh, order superintendent, so just, I know we had an issue at another property where. They put the fence in them. Okay, good.
Good, thank you.
So, public, any notes from the public? Any comment to publics?
I, uh, request we can close the hearing?
Yep, close the hearing.
Ready to, uh.
Deliver it.
Deliver it, okay.
So we need to discuss the waiver first, I believe, or.
So we're looking at three motions here, the waiver, the site plan and the amended S U B.
That's the same. So, and I caught the waiver in the resolution.
Yeah, you did, right, yeah, but. To Bob's point. We're not waiving the entire fifty foot.
I was suggesting this, an updated waiver to the town. You guys consider what? What you've considered.
In accordance with.
Having just. Update the waiver for.
To approve to our.
Based on the plans committed today.
Hopefully the approved.
Wait, why don't we suggest. Just put it in a condition. That. The waiver. Oh, a waiver is re- is granted of the fifty foot buffer to the extent shown in the site plan. Such an, yeah, does that make sense? Does that solve the problem?
As long as it doesn't negate any landscaping. The way you said it, any landscaping. The way you said it is. Um, a waiver to the fifty foot.
As shown in the site.
But as shown in the site plan approved.
Yeah, and then.
Waiver of the request to the buffer reduction. But to the extent shown on the, on the site.
And then, actually, we have another condition that says the special use permit is conditioned on the approved site plan. Any changes shall require reissuance or disbursement. So even if there's a gray area. You know, they take a tree out, that's. It's shown on the site plan that's changed. Where you generally.
Okay, uh, Mr. Vice Chairman, I'll make a motion, uh, you consider the site plan first, am I correct?
Correct.
Mr. Adam?
Yes, sir.
Uh, that we consider an amended site plan for, uh, CPN twenty three oh fifty nine. Twenty eight ninety, accounting route ten, the industrial zoning, uh, subject to, uh. Conditions listed as well as any conditions that, and receiving, which include.
So, so the board and the applicant are aware, the previous approval contained, I believe, twenty one conditions. For the most part, all the same twenty one conditions are being suggested against mine, um. With the following. Seventeen, we're suggesting the wording to change to the decommissioning bond or surety. Shall provide for an annual increase in an amount to be approved by the town engineer of the surety. To compensate for the cost of inflation or any other anticipated increase of cost level. Uh, twenty two, I believe there was a comment in regards to O and M plan being updated to identify the frequency in which snow will be removed from the site. Um, twenty three, uh, I've identified that the site plan is going to be updated. Uh, you referenced the general note, and you catch what general note number?
Number four.
Number four, and that was to be updated to add.
Add, and the town of Canadega. Before de-ating.
Prior to signatures, and then twenty four, for the site plan was the waiver.
So a waiver of the fifty foot buffer required by town code section two, two, zero, dash, six, two point two, C two. Is granted, but only to the extent, you know, of the approved site.
I believe the other suggested divisions, we have attached to the special use.
Okay, where you made notes in there for the dates of O and M and the decommissioning, they're different. According to the most recent.
Well, I have, yeah, so I, you're right, I will, I will change that date to reflect the current versions, and then I have any subsequent. Revisions there are based on, I might be still reviewing it. I, I believe they've addressed all of our comments. There were some that we.
Yep.
Disruptment, so, yeah, I'll make those changes to reflect the current versions.
And I've reviewed it, but not for approval, and we'll do that once I'm, or these. Finalizes it.
Okay, so I make that motion, I see you second.
I'll second.
All question. Any, for this. For discussion.
All in favor?
I.
I. Thank you.
All right, moving on quickly, uh, we're off to the amendments. Oh, you're not done yet, guys?
Not done yet.
Oh. Throw a wrinkle at you here. We, uh, also make a motion if we consider amendments, like. Special use permit approval for the same address, same CPN number, uh. Amendment a. Existing special use permit. From way back when, back in July of twenty twenty one, so, um. I'll make a motion, subject to. However, a number of conditions.
Yeah, so previously, I believe there was twenty two conditions, give or take, as per the original approval. With the following changes, uh, in this, in this instance, it's eighteen, in regards to the decommissioning bond, our shared same changes that we made to the. The site plan one, and then we added the following, twenty three, especially used permits condition on the approved site plan, any changes shall require reissuance of that's especially. Um, twenty four, the panels, motors and inverted data sheets are to be submitted to the town, uh, prior to issuance of a building. And then twenty five, uh, again, the O and M plan is to be revised to add in this, the frequency which snow will be from the site.
Did you cover the charity bond with its secretary?
Yeah, he said.
He said.
Oh, the number.
Oh, you did a number, yeah.
Um. My, my thought, my suggestion on the number, and I wanted to say this because I'm going to be still reviewing the revised points middle. That there's a change that that number could change. So Louis says specifically the number tonight as a condition. I, I, I suggest that we condition that number's review, and I just wanted to make sure there was, there was not, I don't mean it's anything, I don't believe there is. But I just want to, I feel safer as opposed to having a new number and have to come back. Both of the boards okay with that?
Okay, I accept those. Okay, I accept those conditions and seek a second.
I'll second.
All in favor? All opposed?
Thank you, guys.
Where you gonna stick around?
Pre your site plan, please put the most current date on it. We still have nineteen October.
Okay. We'll leave the world of. Quick docs and solar panels and move on to. More typical residential. Patients. First one being C P N twenty-three oh thirty. Uh, Marley Adams, a big garden jury representing Doug Bennett. Um, property over Pittsburgh, but he specifically. Uh, applied for a property here at forty-nine fifty-five Island Beach Drive. Requesting a site plan approval. For a deck extension alone with a whole lot of variances that Mr. Bennett was successful in getting. At the Z B A meeting back in October. So he's done with the Z B A and he's here in front of us. How are you tonight?
Fine, thanks. This is gonna be much less complicated than everything with the first hour. Um, so I think I just, and can you able to be everything? So, um, I just wanted to quickly review why we're doing what we're doing. What we did to address your concerns, planning board, and our neighbor's concerns, and hopefully it's. Uh, well, keys and hopefully work out. The current conditions are showing up the screen there where. We have, um, two back doors facing the, um, the lake. Um, with that, our main goal at our house would try to make it a safe access to the, to the waterfront, so we don't have to go. The elevation, very steep hill, you get down the waterfront, you want to make it sort of safe and get down for, for my parents and me, if I go over to, you can sit down some, the main deck. Which is the second, raise up down to the waterfront. Um, without falling down the hill. Um, and also kind of connecting the two doors with a, the patio to make it kind of more seamless together. Um, we thought of different options to try to do it, um, with maybe a stairway. Still going off the north end, those stairways are now a slight, small little pathway going along the deck, but still would address. Elevation and angle, or needing a, a safer canyon wall, because it's still the elevation, so our concern with the bigger retaining wall. Would be sight view from the lake would be more stone that won't be visible, but our best option would to. Shift it their way around the front of the deck, you come down towards the south and approach the. The other. Doorway stairway down there, and then actually a new pathway from the back lower door to the waterfront. Um, in a safer pathway. Right now, so there's some slab, stone, and grass, so you want to trip on the rest, we want to be, do that a lot of it. On the next, next prime. Is. The most updated plans, so we, to, um, the initial plan had steps down the whole side of the deck. We decided to move the landing to the north end, so that shift the whole deck more towards the north, so the steps themselves would end midway on, on the, on. From the deck. And I have pictures later on that show that it's really not visible to our neighbors. I, there's a pictures that show I put a. Standup paddle, same angle to step to be where it would end. Uh, I took pictures from my neighbors. Um, bay window and the kitchen window and minimally visible whatsoever. Um, so I thought I'd address that pretty well. We, um. Another picture's gonna show a little bit later landscaping that we're gonna do on the south side of the patio, because I think our neighbor's concerned is now that all the traffic from the deck. Is gonna be coming out towards their direction. Um, we're usually not both out there at the same time, wasn't too much during the whole summer, but there'd be some landscaping, what helps you get some barrier. And they would drive, so they're later on, it does that as well. But the, the updated, you can go down a little bit more as you show. Um, so, plans from there. Your concerns was about protecting the tree, um, so. Later on in, in the, uh, I can give you a handout somewhere too. Um, our arborist. Had a tree, tree protection plan with an eight to ten foot barrier. Protection, we're gonna be going to nothing much, my six inch depth down there, so be, they'll put a fence around the tree to protect it as well. Um, so it shouldn't be any damage to the tree going on at that point too.
But temporary fence or?
Temp- temporary, just a construction fence. So, and we'll put a fence between our house and the neighbor's house, so there were no construction vehicles going on in there, there along the road. Um, so that protective will remain as well. Um, the next picture we showed the landscaping. Plan landscaping, so it should be a good area landscaping between them two, I can't. About how high the tree will be eventually, it'll be at one point, but it should be some protection. Next picture, we shown the, um. Photos from. From where the stairs would be coming, it would be really shifting back further. View from the bay window. Can't really, you can barely, any of their view, really our neighbor, it really doesn't affect the, the, um. The waterfront much at all. Uh, actually, the tree is more of an obscuring than anything else. Next two pictures show. From, from there, um, even standing at their neighbor's pet, you barely see it whatsoever. And then that's a just proof that I was showing about that we have, we have, um, emails from the arborists. But thought we, we still, the whole year of the project, I thought we, um. We addressed the issues that you guys had and our neighbor's concerns. Welcome back to the house. Questions?
Uh, we'll find out, uh, any questions?
We're in with the record or carrying for the record. I did talk with Mr. Bennett's town site, so. Uh, we have documented this. I see the fire pit's gone.
Yeah, I guess I told me that.
Did I see any? Um, construction, but vertical. Fencing.
Solar origin?
Yeah, I didn't see any of that on there. The black fencing that's gonna go.
Solar origin, sure, silthens.
Silthens, thank you.
Man, the plans, where we're gonna put it?
Yeah.
I did not put anything on the plan, but I would.
It should be on there. Especially on the lake.
Oh, oh, you know, around, oh, around the lake during the work?
During the work, yeah, you should show it on your plans. Uh, where you're gonna be, the area of disturbance.
So the, the only place it's disturbing the lake would be just. Oh, I mean, because it's not being touched anymore.
No, but you're, you're building those stairs.
Okay.
So it should go from. That the north to the south side, at least. Uh, protect the lake. Uh, that should be shown on there in area disturbance. You and I talked about it, it's not on the plan, and I don't know if anyone saw it, but there's a drainage hole that comes out right at the end of your.
Correct. That's not being walked, that shouldn't be touched, that's not be touched.
Not gonna be touched, okay. That was my own question.
I didn't have any comments, but, or questions, just to comment on the landscaping, because, you know, you know, being on the lake, we've talked about landscaping a lot. Um, I had. No issues with the landscaping, it, it was clear in the plans. The intent and, um. The shoreline guidelines, that's the term I was looking for out of my head. Um, that was. Appropriate in, in my eyes. But no questions.
Is there a statement? Usually marked it, usually noted. Mr. Bennett, do you know if you submitted a. Statement regarding the shoreline guidelines, uh?
I wasn't aware. Likely did not.
Okay, that is to ensure that the, well, there's your landscaping plan. That's what I think we looked at. Just in a, in a narrative form, uh, describing. Uh, what you intend to do, obviously protect the maple tree, preserve the maple tree, install the shrubbery as. As shown, uh. Not block the view of any of your neighbors. I knew that was concerned at the Z B A meeting that. One of your neighbors was concerned about the, the blue view of the lake. Uh, I think you even stated at that meeting. Uh, you're gonna put on cable decorating?
The best, we're gonna do a minimal view, I view step, I'm gonna definitely do steps without back it and without the, um, risers on it. The existing deck does not have cable on it. I mean, so, and we're not destroying the existing deck or railing, so I really, I mean, haven't. Got to try to match it similar to that.
Okay.
So we may not have. But, but definitely the, the steps will have, planning on having risers to it in the background, so you can see through it.
Lance, yeah, just a condition that the, the applicant submitted. Statement of. Shoreline guidelines, that's a condition, yeah. And again, you understand what.
I'll, I'll, I'll get, I'll even get detailed what it does. So that's, that's the last pending thing that we need to.
So I had. Lance, you didn't look at this app. That's fine, no. There is an erosion seven, you want to click on that erosion seven control plant? That might show the, uh, silthens. It, it doesn't. Zoom in.
We don't need updated plan, I just want a statement of what we're gonna do protecting the shoreline and.
Uh, yeah, just for some landscaping, yeah, visual, visual effect. What it looks like from the lake, looking at your property.
You, do you want plans that show that?
Your landscape plans, it's just a narrative describing.
Yeah, that is just a, it's just a narrative about how you believe your projects comply with the town's requirements regarding shoreline. So the town has a adopted policy that said. Projects on the lake have to apply by these rules regulations. You're gonna provide the town a statement about how your project and your landscaping plan is shown. And based on the project that you're proposing for the plan board tonight, I do believe it's complying with, with that criteria.
Perfect.
Did you look at the landscape schedule at all, or?
Uh, no, the E C B could review this before the landscaping plan was about.
Okay. Um, I guess our general statement would be to be native species. Yes, as far as your landscaping, I think most of it's just shrubs, uh, you're not putting any seduous or. Uh, evergreen trees in, so.
I, I just peed at it, and I saw that there was boxwood in it. There is a boxwood white in also in the base of more, so you may wanna. Uh, opt for something different than boxwood. And, uh, I would definitely suggest a name, charmithe.
And if need be, stand in front of that tree and don't let anybody near it, okay? Because that was a prime concern of. A lot of, uh, E C B, the Z B A, and Southern Missport too. Okay, uh, it's a beautiful tree, and like, sure, you want to keep it, and we'd like to see it treated. Okay, anybody in the audience, uh, want to address the board regarding this application? Again, this is Island Beach Drive. If not.
I, I can't, we have someone that I can.
Did somebody wave? Okay, Mr. Gray, is it?
Yep, this is, uh, Richard Gray, I'm forty, I'm the neighbor to the south of, of Doug, known him a long time. Uh, I had, uh. Requested that he not put those steps in. Uh, I know, understand he's moved back, I've never seen that plan. And this is the first time I've heard about the shrubs. So it's not the lake view that I'm concerned about, it's the overall view, that side of the house. When we, uh, rebuilt our house a few years ago, we, we put some windows in specific for the existing structures that were in place. And, um. You know, I, I guess I just want on the record. Very disappointed in the zoning board. Uh, when we, when we asked them not to do this. Um, ma- maybe these, this new plan works, but I, I haven't seen it, to see that. So you asked for comment, there it is.
Well, uh, the Z B A, uh, I know they heard. You, you, I think your wife also spoke to it. And the, uh, and, uh, they heard, you know, your request, and I, they granted the variances as recorded. I think this board feels. It's not any detriment to what. What Mr. Bennett's proposing, I think, unless anybody feels differently. Okay, well, I appreciate your, uh, comments. Anybody else? All right, that being said, I am ready to take a motion. We've got a seeker, take two, and a site plan. Uh, in the interest of the time, let's bundle with.
Make a motion to the bundles. Uh, secret reservation, and we need to see the site, and of course, C P N twenty-three, that's the third year. Forty-nine fifty-five Island Beach Drive. And the another simple site plan has six conditions.
Yes, six conditions, it's correct. I have, number five was. Plans that will be revised to depict all the full soil and road control measures that be provided during construction, be shown on the plans prior to signatures. And then the sixth one was the applicant to provide a statement of compliance regarding towns adopted shoreline development guidelines. And it's to be submitted to the town by this.
I'll second the motion.
Yeah, you got a motion, a second.
The seventh, for the native species.
Okay, it's given the plan to be updated for five native species.
Well, to ensure that only. Okay, accept that, uh, addition, Mark?
Yes.
Okay, second, or accept some motion, addition, okay. Uh, for discussion, if not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, Mr. Bennett. Thank you for your patience. All right, we move on to, uh. To new year application. C P N twenty-three oh thirty-seven, uh. It's, uh, McMahon LaRue Associates, in this case, Rob Bender, representing Tom Delaney. At thirty-four ninety-two Sandy Beach Drive. Uh, requesting an amendment. To an approval for a site plan. And. You do have a really nice site plan.
We do.
Thank you for making that happen.
Yes, I'll, I'll keep my remarks, uh, brief, I, I know everyone's familiar with the history here. Uh, so this was a, a plan that was previously approved for reconstruction of the dwelling. Um, following that, uh, impervious area was installed that didn't conform with the approved plans. Zoning board's antinvariance for its remain, uh, I've heard several times before the board, and understood loud and clearly. Uh, that the existing conditions did not work in this board despite the variance being granted. Uh, I discussed with the client at length, uh, and I believe we have. A solution, uh, here that I hope you'll find acceptable, it, it comes at great expense, and there's some terror work that needs to be done. Uh, but Mr. Delaney is, uh, willing to do it, the interest compromise. Um, so if I just walk over to the plan. Uh, as we had previously alluded to at some prior meetings, uh, the existing driveway, uh, would remain edge fault. Uh, these areas here are proposed to be torn out. Uh, and completely forest pervious papers, uh, are proposed to be installed. Uh, with an underdrain that connects to the existing catch basin to help provide, uh, profiltration and enhanced water quality over the conditions that exist there today. Uh, it also results in an approximate net reduction. Uh, of about five percent below what the zoning board appeals granted for this property. Uh, so we hope that you find that acceptable, uh, and, and, uh, in the spirit of compromise and informative to your group plan. I'll stop there and answer any questions you may have.
The line line adjustment that was, it's been taken care of, so we're looking at the right area. So we consider it just based on that, uh. Driveway staying the same?
The driveway will stay the same, correct. So it'll, it'll remain, and when you say, uh, driveway, Mr. Porter, talking in front of the garage. That'll remain the, so grass paper driveway, so. Uh, Mr. Delaney, this family really viewed the, uh, the east side of the road as. They don't, they won't use that driveway.
Are the papers of the same ilk as the papers he put up in front of his house, or?
So the, the paper that's, uh, being exposed, and I have a cut sheet I can submit, it's, it's a Belger paper, it's of the same line. Uh, of the grass pervious papers, but it's called Aqua Rock, it's an incredibly permeable paper, but it looks more like a traditional. Paper. And, uh, they'll provide for traction in the winter, ease of snow removal, but it has the same. Uh, characteristics as the GeoGrid, uh, grass paper. And again, that, that's a very expensive product, but he, uh, he sees utility in being able to shovel it off, have traction and, and under grass.
Being that the others is more of a grass. Look.
He, he, he found that, as I mentioned in the prior meeting, he's found that it's, it's just not usable. With, with the slope and, and the quality of, of the product, it's just not.
I guess technically. I mean, papers are still considered part of the block coverage.
They are, but they have a variance on the block coverage, so they're okay on that.
They are, but they have a variance on the lot coverage, so they're okay on that.
Okay. I'm just thinking out about here.
Yeah.
There were pretty red flags, um. You know, I have on that too, is sometimes those papers get gravel put in them or sand put in them. Can you also give us the build sheet on it, you know, the detail, how that's gonna be?
Yeah, I have that as a suggested condition for your consideration. That across actually in detail, all the papers and the under drain.
Yeah. We have Mr. Liver provide that for making this up.
On this project and it applies a lot of, a lot of these uh. Events we have on these private roads. Is Mr. Delaney's deed? Two parcels with the easement Sandy Beach Drive up the middle being not part of his property essentially? Or is it just from, from the lake to? Back of the property behind the garage, his deed?
Yeah, so it's interesting, there's a lot of variation right around the lake, so his particular property, it's a single tax parcel. It's bifurcated by Sandy Beach Drive. He does not hold title to Sandy Beach Drive. But his legal description is the bifurcated parcel, but it's a single tax lot, so it's not two separate parcels, it's got one address, one tax.
Who holds title to Sandy Beach?
I think it's a town.
I'll look at it. I don't know.
If you look at it, if you look at it on it or. It's, it's, it's extracted out, it's not privately owned. If you think of like South Lake Road in Millsack, for example, from the, from the back of the property lines of the waterfront, even though it's bifurcated by the road, it's all privately held and it's just a travel way.
So you can anticipate my next question is, the impervious in Sandy Beach Drive, is that used in your calculation of your?
Is the impervious in Sandy Beach Drive used in that violation?
No, it wouldn't.
No, it's not, it's not.
Well, I, okay, I.
Shouldn't be in our code enforcement, there's only sort of thought.
I'm, I'm just trying to.
Yeah, so the.
Trying to help.
Total, total lot area owned by Delaney is twelve thousand four hundred and five square feet. Total impervious from building acres concrete asphalt is four thousand three hundred and seventy seven square feet.
Not including Sandy Beach Drive.
That's correct.
Okay, okay.
So we're worried about a thirty five percent.
So I guess.
Then we were approved for forty point four.
Over time, we've gone from uh. Because the original was forty percent, mostly, down to proposed twenty nine point eight, seven percent. And now we're back at thirty five. I don't know how the board feels, I think, I think uh. It's a good faith effort hereby they tap into it, it's a very good thing, uh. Anybody have the objection to that?
No, I think, I went back and listened to our March of twenty twenty two conversation on that. The largest concerns around this were. Uh, the infiltration that happened with that drain, there's a lot of discussion around whether or not that drain should pump someplace else because it goes through into the lake. So I think it is a good effort with the papers, the question that we get in the Venice area, and the design X gap and, and everything else, how does that? People were excited and we would indicate somebody had to maintain that. Uh, I think over time it fills in with certain degree and everything else, but again, I, I don't know how to leave that or. We still have that pipe that goes straight into what?
If you recall initially, that inlet wasn't even on the plan. It wasn't until after the initial, our first review that we said, hey, there's an inlet out there, a catation. Uh, what kind of condition that cat basins in, I guess, if it's not flowing or not open. Just surcharges and runs overland between, between the properties, uh, I. Uh, again, this, this will not make it any worse, this is certain, I, I think what you're saying is probably helping in terms of less impervious speed than.
Yeah, I think I'm a part of it, sorry. Mr. German, we were just having a conversation on whether or not that straight pipe going out to the lake would be better served as a dry well or something like that, that's all.
Oh.
And that, but it's, uh, I, I do think that the papers make a better situation than what is there today.
Okay. Well, then are we ready to uh, move this along? Uh, anybody in the audience here or there, anywhere?
I, I think we have a comment that if they change their mind about that particular product, maybe have to go to another pervious product rather than paper.
The can't pay over.
Uh huh. It's already paved, they're gonna rip it out, you're saying if they change products?
Yeah, in the future, they can change, so make another pervious rather than adding pavement back in.
Well, I think with the, with the approval of this site plan and that will. Have to remain.
Here's what we're gonna do.
Type of permeable product, I would think.
We're gonna add a condition number four five, that says something to the extent of. The forest papers shown in the site plan dated November whatever, two thousand twenty three. Uh, shall remain. As porous as a permeable surface. That way, because in our town code, years ago, we added a section that says a violation of. Conditions of site plan approval is a violation of town code. Therefore, we can, it would be treated as a violation of ten years from now, somebody said that's true, then they'll repay that. So thank you.
Okay. Good catch, Ken, yeah, uh, it's type two and it's amended site plan, so we can put it together. Uh, do you think, Lance, while we're discussing this, uh, get the date of that latest plan. I don't think you have March twenty second, twenty two here.
No, I'm, no, it's, I, I have the low, the second warrants, because the first one is the original plan, the second warrant is, is the amended watch.
Oh, okay, October twenty three, yeah, I think that plan came in this week. So where that data is, okay, so ready to move, do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion to bundle this uh, C P N two two dash zero zero eight. At thirty four ninety two Sandy Beach Drive on the type two super action for approval to the amended site plan. Approval with now six.
I have, you know, five conditions.
Five conditions, will you read form five and please?
Four is the lot line adjustment and filing shall be reflected on the site plans prior to signatures. So I believe the lot line has been filed, we just don't know that the plans accurately have been updated to the flight path. And then the fifth one is the forest papers as shown on the site plans is this, and now. Date of November twenty twenty three and as discussed at the main plan board meeting, you know, reference the date shall remain as previous surface. Was there another event?
I'll second the motion. You got a motion, a second for the discussion? I don't know if I asked anybody in the audience, do they have any comments, concerns before we vote? If not, forever hold your peace, all favor.
Hi.
Close. We did it very much. Do you want this back? We can put it into the record.
You can put it in the record, yeah. Thank you very much, everybody.
Thanks. Okay.
Yeah, I just checked.
Uh, next to C P N point three oh seventy four. Uh, Mark's engineering is representing Bob Uplike, uh, as a property in Rochester, but we're here to talk about property thirty four sixty four. Sandy Beach Drive. Has the site plan approval to tear down and rebuild. Single family residents and a, and a detached garage, variances requested for side yards, which. Mr. Uplike received back in October, so we're ready to move on and. Mr. Uplike, how are you this year?
I'm doing good, I guess.
Good.
Yeah, so I'll give a brief overview and then uh, I think Brennan, uh, Mark will come in and. Talk about the M R B, M R D and, and report and all that stuff on the drainage. Um. So we're, to go back a little bit, we uh, we have a, a pipe that kind of cuts through the one side of our. Our property or under our house, it's put our water. And I've been working with them for about three years to come up with a plan and try to. Uh, that, to satisfy them and was. Satisfy me to be able to move their house off the, off the uh, pipe, so. What they did is they changed the easement, uh, as long as I moved the pipe so far off the, off there. Move the house off the pipe so they could access it, so it was kind of a win-win, I think we've done it in a pretty good. Manner that was only enhanced the neighborhood. I have a couple uh, uh. Pictures of side by side of uh, the renderings, if you wanted to show those and I know. They're uh, they're called side by side of existing and proposed house. It's, and is it the other category?
Right from your mouse's, I think.
It is. This isn't the house uh, we have in left right now, it's uh, got some foundational issues, it's sagging. Can't be repaired because it's sitting over the pipe, they won't allow any digging or, you know, without the pipes. Uh, this is a, just a rendering of a new house and what it will look like. And it, it will also free it from the easement that it is currently on, so we have to uh, execute it. The new easement, we have to do, it's pending approval, so if we get the approval and uh, just file it, so. Uh, in the next page, I think.
When you say approval, approval from Almar.
Um, you are, yeah.
They endorsed it.
Yeah, it's already approved. Almar. Um, this is just the uh, the existing shed which we want to get rid of, and it is located in Ontario County sanitary sewer easement. And uh, put in the rise and it's the same style as the house. It is not in the. So, okay. Getting out from under a lot of issues, so it's kind of the overview of what it looks like, there is one other one in there, if you want to pull it up, it's still, it's another also. It's rendering of the south landscape wall, so some confusion about how that would look is. This isn't exactly how it will look, it would be a little different, correct, but it, it, it gives you the idea, you know, the way the plantings are gonna be able to be put on that side and so on and so forth. So, it's not just like, it's not like the gigantic wall, it can reach higher, it's about three feet.
Does your landscaping plan that's part of your package and part of what we're reviewing? Informed exactly to this picture then?
Uh, but the landscaping is similar, she, I gave her the plants and she found similar plants, but the U Island landscaping plan is. It, it spells out exactly what they are, there's grasses in the middle and there's, there's, you know, plants that look like that.
There are times we see pictures and, but the plan doesn't reflect.
Yeah, it's very close, but maybe not to do that.
Okay.
Uh, so, yeah, that's why I had, now, I, I think that uh, I also had submitted a, one other uh. One other uh, response uh, last week, um. We got an eight inch pipe, I think there's some confusion around that and if. If, I don't know how much detail you went into that, but I can. I can wait and, and if there's questions, come back and address that or, you know.
Yeah.
Or we could go through it real quick.
I know that was a concern of uh, your neighbor and you had a response and. It, I, I think it applies mostly to the wetlands to the east, uh, which is, it's been a problem area for years. Uh, I know there's been, this plug pipe that there's a replaced twelve inch pipe and then that was a. I guess eventually it looked replaced with a fifteen inch pipe, which I guess in some people's opinion seems to be worth. Now, it's not gonna, I mean, we're in a flood plain, so you're not gonna, you're, you're gonna see water, not out of breath. So I, I think the issue of the eight inch pipe and draining of the wetlands and, and all that isn't. Particularly uh. On point for this application, I think we have to look at the site itself and unless the, the board feels different.
If there is any concerns, let me know and I can come back in here, I've got a lot of detail about the way the pipe's designed, it's not designed properly, so on and so forth, so. Um, and it's not working and it's all what's it out in seventy years old, besides that, it's great, but uh.
It's an orphaned pipe, nobody owns it, right?
I, so I'll let, I'll let Brennan go on.
Well, here's a view of the answers.
Hi, uh, good evening, Brennan Marks, Marks Engineering. Uh, I think uh, basically summed everything up, we got a dilapidated house on top of a municipal water supply. Can't be rebuilt in the same location, so we're doing the best we can with what we have to work with, right? We've got the variances that we need to grant, have been granted to allow for this house as it's played as a layup since. Um, we've met all the remaining zoning codes for this district, uh, the, we've provided stormwater. Uh, mitigation practices with dry wells that will retain, capture, retain, treat and infiltrate. Water from the uh, the newly constructed building. Uh, we have previous calculations on the plan to represent the, how this um, equates and how we are going to reduce the amount of water coming off this house property. Um. The drainage, like Chuck, as you mentioned, it's in a flood plain, it's going to flood. And, and it has flooded in the past. The water, they lock, your lawn areas around the house hold water during the hundred year storms, very late, very less than a hundred year storms, um. I think the break ball elevation at the front is six ninety point four foot elevation, six ninety one point seven, depending on which uh, K W use. Um, the side yards on the south side of the house are six ninety. Uh, so you can see that the break balls, well, four tenths higher than the lawn at the south side of the house. Uh, that's an existing condition, we don't plan to change that after property line. Uh, we are just constructing a house on this lot as it fits. Um, footprint of the house is not much bigger than what's, uh, what's there now, um, just relocated and stretched out in a rectangular shape. The uh, garage at the other side of the house is where the, where the cars we park, the personal storage will, will be taken inside the garage. Uh, that fits within the buffers for the wetland, I should say, the, the permitted new buffer for the wetland, which is fifty feet in this case. Um, side town setback requirements, there's other easements over there for sanitary. And water that we have to contend with, but it also fits, so, to comply with the zoning codes, it will be less than sixteen feet tall, I think it was one of the questions the board may have had. Um. In the, the height of the structure, we have proved that it will comply with the maximum height allowed for the zoning and we provided calculations for such. And answer your question, uh, the rendering did fairly well follow the landscaping plan, but we did do a detailed planting plan around the house for the shoreline guidelines. And we provided a statement for such.
It's a statement, thank you. I guess the biggest issue is regarding stormwater management on the site and in regards to the wetlands issues. Uh, it's just making sure that the. Your, your downs, I guess the existing house has no down, no downspouts or gutters.
None, you know, just.
So just the fact you're putting gutters and putting them into dry wells. Uh, will probably improve. Uh, runoff from the property. If the dry walls, the dry walls surcharge, uh, is there overland route that's been designated or?
Uh, it would surcharge onto the surface of the ground, um, and it would continue to drain. Uh, east, from west to east along that southern boundary, so it spills over the break wall. This is the lowest point.
Would it stay in the southern boundary and not cross onto the property to the south?
If, the, 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 again, both properties are in the flood plain, there will be pounding on both properties and it will not. On anymore than what it is now. Um, that elevation that at the break wall of six ninety point four is not changing.
Well, I think the key is anymore.
Right.
So I guess it's the neighbor's concern and, and you are raising. So I guess it's the neighbor's concern and and you are raising the uh.
Sorry, I have a big well.
You are raising the structure to comply with the uh structure on a foot point.
That's right.
So that's why it's higher.
I mean, we we have things to add, I mean.
It slab on ground?
It's uh it's a crawl space.
Brennan, two things. First of all, Karen and I met with the updates on their property, if you could note that. Um on your details, I think for your dry wells, you showed a French drain. Is that not? You said you're gonna vent over or you're not gonna do French drain under or?
It's you know. The French drain detail, I'm getting there.
Yeah, I know. A French drain on all three of them actually.
Hmm I think it's been since removed on the on the latest discussion, but uh there's been discussion and and. Lance brought up in his review of having a curtain drain along that south side of the property. Uh we have no objection to that. Um it'll it'll basically uh be at the front side of the retaining wall that's there.
Yeah.
It'll be at the toe of that wall. It'll be an exposed stone drain. Uh it will get right to the way.
There I I think um just to touch on some of the elements that are for us tonight. We did go through the view. Um I did look at all the documentation that was provided. Based on what is shown on the plans that are before you, I think it's good to know a couple of things for the record if the board. Uh one is they're not required to do any stormwater mitigation in eyes of the D C. They're under the threshold for that. That's. That's governed by uh acres of disturbance. So anything over acre, presidential over five acres, they're under both of those thresholds. Um the other guidance that we look for is what does the town being the towns and MS four? What is our criteria for doing stormwater mitigation measures? Like from properties, uh anything with twenty thousand square foot of disturbance triggers that need. So they are providing, and that's a two-year storm event, that we ask for uh water quality conveyance to be provided. Um they've provided uh dry wells to accommodate a twenty-five year storm event. So they've oversized them to accommodate a larger area of runoff. Um size to handle basically a twenty-five year storm event. Now. I I think in most instances of this area, you're gonna see that overtopping um during those type of events due to the location that they're at. Um hence the reason why we're suggesting a mechanism from on the south side that is provided so that. The conveyance go away from the property as opposed to sitting there and just accumulating. Uh you know, I know the elevation out there is relatively flat in that swale back to the lake. So my thoughts on the current drain and I'm open to other suggestions. But the current drain thought process is that any of that initial overflow would be carried away and would provide us a system. That might take any any additional runoff from your site during those bigger events and carry it away from the site. Um one element to know is D C does regulate the distance from the dry wells from the houses. It's mainly because. Of the infiltration into the ground. They don't want your your foundation. Being that you have no foundation. We still suggest that you pull them ten feet from the structure, but with that, we also suggest ten feet from the property. I think based on our revised plan review, that was probably the the only two major things that we were kind of thinking of. That we were hoping to have addressed is that one pulling them farther away from the house, pulling them a little bit farther away from the. The property line to comply with the ten foot setback and then proposing that curtain drain or mechanism similar. That would convey any overflow from the site out towards the lake in a way that's better than just sitting there. With understanding that we realize you're in a flood plain, there's gonna be some honey that's gonna occur mainly from the land side.
We're okay with those two conditions. Actually, no, I can bring it into one position.
Yeah, that was my thought from the wall, something that.
Yeah, along the back end on their side, debate system, they're capturing the overflow.
Oh, uh shoreline guidelines, let's talk about them real quick. Uh you saw the uh. What the landscape plan? Go right there. Okay, as as shown in your rendering, uh you had put a bit of shrubbery around the foundation. On the east side, south side, up on the north side. Uh in regards to the lake, is that patio at grade? Patio in the back is out at grade. I mean, is this walk up?
Uh on the brick wall?
The patio coming out of the back of the house, you have a patio.
Yeah.
Is that just a walk off, step off, give us the grass?
Yeah, I know it's it's they're they're gonna be pavers.
Answer your question. It would be a high-grade concrete patio, but it is gonna be elevated from existence now because the house is elevated.
Okay, cuz that's two feet hard. Okay, I was just thinking uh maybe continue some of your shrubs across that western. Side of the patio facing the lake. Also, uh certainly have give yourself room to. Step off the patio toward the lake, but uh maybe shrubs either side of uh the middle of the patio. Understand what I'm saying, mister?
I think so. You're saying it. You're saying to make it more uh.
Put a patio aside.
Yeah, some shrubs either right there. Yep.
Something right here.
Not not uh right where the arrows.
Oh here?
Yeah, in front. Give yourself a gap to to walk in off the patio. I I think uh. You put a.
I think I think we wouldn't want.
Table and chairs up on the patio would probably give you a little privacy from the lake.
Yeah, well then we. Yeah, so I don't know. But I mean, we we do have the landscaping on your side. The whole idea was. We need you to sit here at the other view of the lake.
Well, I'm not asking for upgrade or reviser, you know, some some little little shrubbery. Let me the. Two feet off the ground.
There's a large diameter tree that I think is a part of the by the existing shed.
Yes.
Yeah, all trees are intended to be kept. We're not taking anything away.
The side by side view, I had the the rendering of said new.
Said it's two feet.
House.
Well, he's green.
Uh it was like a navy blue, kind of soft blue. Is that the intent to to have Lee siding or is there?
We haven't picked out the exact, but that's in that's kind of what we've been leaning towards. It's that that type that. Potagy type look. It it shakes, but not really shakes, you know. Not really wooden shakes, but shakes that are vinyls.
I'm sorry, did you address the color?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
And the answer was?
Answer was, yeah, that's kind of what we're leaning is that blue.
Maybe blue.
Might not be that exact shade, but yeah, more of a grit lighter tone.
Okay, uh anybody in the audience here, there? Yes, sir. Your name and address, sir.
Um I did send some flights in today. I don't know if it'd be okay for you to just like. It's really should have to go back through a bunch of documents material. It's a whole lot of one file. You know, do you have those?
They weren't dated today. I saw them, I think. Fourteenth. Uh right there.
So this is really kind of the primary issue we have you know with this project. Is that and I understand variance has been granted, but the house is coming to be five feet from the property line and the further to the. The east than it is right now. And it's creating a situation where in essence it's creating like a large, I guess I would say. Uh visual obstruction on that side of the house, more so than what we would have expected is that there was a website that was that was more code compliant. And there's been a question about whether or not he is just really an impact or not. I think that people would recognize the fact that. If you had feel a feel the vision, if you had something that was up close to you, that would be the thing that you would recognize the most. It's that proximity that becomes like the issue. The building itself extends approximately about eighteen feet in front of uh my father's property or my father's house. Um and that's what's what's really kind of creating like that that extra issues that that eighteen feet is really kind of the biggest issue. Um let me go to the next page, please. So this is the house down at which you talked about earlier this evening. Um down at uh at thirty-four ninety-two, the house that was just uh recently I think approved and. And especially about the previous area. Uh so if you compare this to the rendering that I provided, you can see that it's very similar. And again, the face of this building though is is equal with the building that's next to it. So the east side of the of the building is is equal, you know, two-story part with the two-story part of the building next door to it. Imagine this with another eighteen feet on it, you know, further to the east, right? The one thing that I would like to point out though in regards to this is that once the building got in front of the neighboring buildings. It goes down to a one-story roof line. Um can I just scroll down? So right now, when we look at the property that's in the area of where 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 this project is. If we go over under the other side of the applicants project at thirty-four sixty-two. The elements that are located in front of the building, you know, closest to the road are a single uh story roof line. Yeah, they do have a loft, a second story loft, but it is a single story roof line which helps break up that wall. Um why is that important? It's because especially to this project. It's because the location of their building only five feet off of our property line offers no other really solution to be able to mitigate. Uh the visual impacts of the project. Can't put up trees that are tall enough. Um there's nothing you can really you can put in there that's. That's vegetative that's gonna accomplish. It's the only way to do it is by doing it something architectural. Um if you scroll down, this is looking the other direction. Uh thirty-four seventy-eight again. Building steps down and once it gets once it gets towards the road, it helps break up that break up that visual. If you go down Sandy Beach Drive and and the character of the neighborhood, the character of the neighborhood is that you will find coincidence of this in the neighborhoods. Where the where there are buildings that are either located in front of a building, buildings that extend in front of a building. Where the outer portion of it is a single story roof line. Uh there are some instances where you have things like this, but there is partial part of the building itself in front. But then once it gets out further, it helps reduce that visual impact by by going down the single story roof. Let me go to the next slide, please. So what we're besides that being our concern with this pressing concerns and that volume of material. Submitted and it's been replied to. Uh that because the building is being proposed even five feet from the property line, we're just asking that no lights be provided on that side. Uh because they would basically just suck shine on our property. Uh no mechanical equipment, they get AC units or air handling units, uh just because it was put the noise source almost darting right at the property line. Uh no utilities on south side specifically, especially underground utilities, because if they ever had any service, they would have come and dig it up. Um and really we prefer that you know like no fans, no noise material, you know, that on that side of the house. Uh it was an asset where you consider these things. Okay, the next one, please. So the this is something that we submitted early on. This is the applicant's property. This is my father's property. What has happened out here over the years is that back in like around eighty-five or so, neighbors rebuilt their property to the south of us. Crazy property and have flooding that's still that's happening on the side of the house. Back around nineteen ninety. Uh former owner of the applicant's property put in a rotating wall. It was just, you know, rip rap wall. Is this in the lower area, Burton would collect and go out to the lake. And so when they did that, what happens now is that this area is higher. And all this area drains into here and now comes down onto our property. What we're developing is that we're developing a muddy area out here. And and it's one of those things is once it develops around here, we have it and like all year long. You know, all season long. So uh go to the next slide, please. But this again, this is the the uh break wall that was put in um on the applicant's property. This is ours. There's about a four inch difference. It's actually slopes back. Discharge point is actually over here where it comes onto our property. The discharge from their property. Next slide, please. So this is, I'm not gonna go through and and read all this, but. I have a question for this board and maybe it's a question that needs a code enforcement. That there's a specific section within the zoning code that applies to all projects regardless of size of the project. It requires it, would you scroll down to some? It requires that the runoff rate has to match the existing and have provided drainage calculations to prove that. And that's different than the speed requirements, the US law requirements. This is an overall requirement in the zoning code. And if and if there's a section of the code or there's a section of something else that basically excludes something that says you do not have to do this. There may be, right? So I need to ask you that this board of the or the code enforcement. It didn't indicate whether or not this section of the code is actually applicable or not, or and it's and it's enforced because. This is it seems pretty straightforward. Uh kind of the next uh the next slide piece. So this is uh an exhibit that was provided by the applicant. It shows approximately about a thousand square feet of that little area being built on its house. Um so when we talk about drainage and there's things you basically with drainage all the time when you're looking at applications. To mitigate uh peak peak discharges, which one of the one of the key methods is to add storage. So when you add storage. It pushes down the discharge rate off of the site. And you take storage away typically will increase the discharge rate that's coming out of the site. So again, in regards to the the code section, it would increase the discharge rate that's coming out of the site. The uh the applicant is also proposing to put in uh dry wells and so. Many of the the points that I've been trying to make uh in the material that I that I've supplied to the to the town is that the dry wells will. Discharge by overflowing to the top of the dry wells. That combined with the reduced drainage area will increase the drainage that comes across to our property. So at at the end of the day, there's nothing that's being taken away for the to make up for the drainage area that is that is being. For the storage area that's being used. The one that I would also like to point out in regards to the to the drywall design. This is an older dry. I know the applicant hasn't tried. This drywall, the bottom of the drywall, I think, was around, it's about six feet deep. If I'm not mistaken, they would put it down around uh six eighty-four elevation. Uh the interesting thing about that is that the lake at its low point is in the sixty-six range. And the lake at its high point is at in the sixty-eight. So the bottom two feet to four, four and a half feet of that drywall. With full water all the time cuz it's lower than the lower than the lake. So this is the. The maybe one of the issues that was brought up before. There's an existing drainage pipe. I can't recall what, eight inches or ten inches. It runs along the south side of the applicant's property. The issue that we're bringing up is that is that. His project is gonna impact, it's gonna impact that uh that pipe. There's a lot of issues I'd say that concern this pipe. Uh it affects the wetlands, affects the drainage in the area. Uh I understand there may be ownership issues, questions about that. Um I asked the board uh take a look at this. Um because I think that that pipe itself is something that is is intricate integral. To the way that the drainage works in this area. Everybody knows you have flooding problems down in this area. Um if you scroll to the next slide, just look. I'm sorry for moving so quick. Yep, so I'll be done with my last one. So in regards to the pipe. I believe that the applicant indicated they had survey done in showing in sixty-seven sixty-five, the fifteen inch pipe was put in as at six eighty-nine. So that pipe is is over uh one point three five feet lower. The reason why that's important is that the wetland, there's two different wetlands that are that are on the east side. One of them is a is permanently wet. The other one is an intermittent wetland. Way that the intermittent wetland is is the one that outlets to this lower pipe. So and in addition, what happens is that without that drainage structure in place, also takes away significant amount of potential drainage storage. When we do get those rain call events that come down out of like. Last maybe the last point that I wanna make is that I made a number of points in regards to that we don't want construction equipment on my father's property. And that's really to to preserve the fact that we have some slopes on the side of our property that protect our drainage. So we don't wanna have somebody come in disturb those areas, come in and overfill the area. So we don't want to have somebody come in, disturb those areas, come in and overfill the areas and now they technically lay uh those shoulders that are, that's on our property right now, um just because they, they came back and repaired it and overfilled the property. So, and the other thing is obviously you want to protect the side of this, that side of the property. So.
Thank you.
Right, thank you guys.
Uh okay, uh. You want to go back? Let's go back uh to Mr. Lucy, his concerns about the structure itself, saying, yeah. Well, I said, I'm, I'm not sure a lot of those issues, there's something that this board can address regarding the, uh he had a, a full, there it is. No lights on the south side, I asked Mr. Update, are you considering any lighting on the south side of the property?
The lighting plans haven't been finalized, but I don't think we're putting any lighting. We, we have them over the doors and on the patio.
Let me think from the back.
In the backyard.
Okay, so uh check that one off. Uh no mechanical equipment on the south side of the house. Uh compressors, generators, I think that you put that on the other side.
It's going on the other side.
Okay. Just make sure that's in the record, uh for me. Uh utilities, I think there's existing gas line on that south side already, right? For the existing house?
There.
But you're going to relocate. So there's already one there. I, I don't think you're planning on any sanitary water or what comes in the front. So I think we're good there.
The only additional utility would be, as discussed earlier, the current drain that we're suggesting be placed in there to help capture any additional overflow that may come from. That would be the only additional utility.
You're using the existing lateral for sanitary, like, the water, Jim wanted a new.
None of them would be on that south side.
I guess the last thing is the new fan outlets. I know your kitchen's on that side.
Kitchen's on that side, we have a fan outlet from the, we have a hood, so we could potentially have a fan outlet there, but, but keep in mind, our houses are twenty-four feet apart now, they're going to twenty-one foot apart. It's not like uh we're going to be right up next to his house. It's, it's a small change.
Yeah, okay. Well, again, I, I don't think there's any regulation that we can insist that the fans not be there, but I think at least regarding three of those issues, they're not issues now. So I think, good, Mr. Lancey, we took here three out of four, for sure, and I don't know if there's that big a concern over the fan. Uh the drainage, uh again, I, I prefaced the whole review on not spending a whole lot of time on draining the wetlands. I don't want to get into the eight-inch pipe. Again, it's something that's kind of unknown to a lot of people. And uh what's, what's happening here uh will be affected one way or the other by the eight-inch pipe. But Lance, can you address possibly some of the issues Mr. Lancey brought up regarding stormwater? I, I know you mentioned you've gone over before regarding what's required in terms of permitting and BEC.
I think some of the concern of the rate of runoff, and I would, I guess, to, to that point, I, I, all hard surfaces from the site are being directed towards the drywall, for the most part. I mean, the, the driveway itself is going to have a slope, and some's going to go off to the north, some's going to sheet flow off to the south. But for the most part, all of the roof and everything associated with the south side of the house is being captured into the drive.
Dry wells.
Again, both beyond what is required per the current regulations. But he's right, with the rate of runoff, what the goal was is that we don't want to see an increase from drainage runoff on, you know, property owner to property owner. We always ask for it to be conveyed outside. There's a swell that has conveyed that. As an improvement to that, to help to that, we're asking for current drain, or I had suggested another similar, you know, another method if, if necessary, but my suggestion was the current drain be provided along the property line, so that any runoff that was conveyed over towards the Lacy property would be conveyed away from the Lacy property to the lake. And then have a direct discharge to the lake, to that, to the wall.
The break wall being higher than the elevation. I guess it's a fact, fact of, it exists. I believe. Hold it back now, then hold it back, then there'll be less to hold back, because you will be putting in, in drywells, the only concern would be if the drywall surcharge. And. It's back to work.
We're going to get flooding because we're in a flood zone. We're not, I mean, the current drain's definitely going to convey a lot of water, it's not going to convey a lot of water.
Oh, no.
Yeah, um and as far as the blood conditions, current drain, but like, you're, you're up that standing water quickly and quicker. The vegetation allows, allows it to maintain, like, not die off.
If you carry it far, far enough back, you should. Some of the concern, I believe, Mr. Lee's mentioned was that the runoff is coming this way. It, it could capture that and discharge it out, so some of that natural sheet flow from the property, if that exists today, could be captured by that current drain.
We're not going, we're not going to solve with flooding issues. I guess it is a flood plain, but we can solve, we can clear them up quicker, so like drain, drain the site, so they climb, the, the drives out quicker.
In the back, you're, you're putting that fill in, as mentioned. In fact, that's going to sort, push the water closer to the lake and further away from the Lucy, or the Lucy house, yes, right? Because you're, you're taking an area that now it's ponding water, holy water, maybe overflows under the Lucy property and filling that up and kicking it directly, more direct to the lake.
It will be less ponding area.
Less ponds.
It will be less ponding in general.
Is Mr. Lucy's concerned is that what are the formerly bonded now going on his property or is it going to a lake?
Well, in context of things, that's eleven hundred square feet, it's minor, small compared to the whole flood plain, the whole watershed that, that's true to be serious, so. I, I, the difference in runoff rates on his property, we could model it, but I think we're talking like less than a cubic feet per second, right? So it's, it's in the models, not going to be that accurate, so. By, by that eleven hundred square foot of ponding area, how much that attenuates?
Okay, well, board, I guess we have to rely on applicant's engineer and our engineers in terms of their opinion as to uh what the potential is out there. Certainly appreciate Mr. Lucy bringing to our attention because was something that certainly discussed. The issue of, of the site, site view up the road, uh.
I'm not sure that, that.
And yeah, I.
Accurately depicted.
I mean. If you didn't have the pipe there, you could move the, the house back further toward the lake, but now you're, you're essentially blocking lake view, so I think you're preserving your lake view as far as the Lucy's concerned. But maybe sacrificing a little bit upfront in terms of the street view. Which I guess I'd rather have the lake view than the street view.
So, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
And it's not in record, but I just happen to have a picture from the most recent flood of this project.
That's what I was looking for.
Um I can, I can send it to you in some way where you can pull it out or you can give it.
I, I have pictures of it.
I think it's on record, actually, on one of the, that was submitted.
Yeah, uh between the houses. Yeah, I was looking for that. I, I saw it once.
It's in an update response.
Him, it could be in the cloud, it's in the cloud permit now, you're saying? This is dry and I'm. Oh. That's the picture I saw too. And Mr. Lucy's house is, is dry, not flooded. He's flooded. Well, I.
This is why, this is the hundred year, over the hundred year, for the because.
That's why I. I, I know as the former chairman of the drainage advisory committee that Sandy Beach, there were a lot of homes uh from back in the two thousand seventeen storm uh that we're concerned about. It was, it was water coming from that wetlands for us. Uh I know that the Finger Lakes Media College did quite a bit of remediation over on their site, they increased the storage capacity of the canoe pond uh on that side, they diverted uh quite a bit of the flow that used to come under three sixty-four uh toward Sandy Beach uh toward the Fallbrook Creek. And from what I understand, and talking to Kevin Olivani, that it's made a vast improvement as far as water coming across three, six and four. Now, this was this year, so I mean.
I can say that I haven't had any problems. My, our land's been dry up until this year. I haven't owned it six summers. Never had any water, no standing water, no drainage issues. When it rains hard, we don't get any puddling. We had this, this, this year was, I mean, but there was a lot of kid and egg where that was underwater, there were people in canoes on, on the streets, I mean, it wasn't normal.
When did you purchase? You said six year, about two thousand?
Twenty eighteen.
Eighteen, okay.
All my neighbors had told me the reason we haven't had any problems is because of that pipe, and, and, and I believe that, we haven't had any problems at all.
All right. All right, well, have we, is there anyone else uh like to address the board regarding this application? Uh okay, um I think we're ready to, we're ready to move on. We've got a secret resolution and a single-stage site plan resolution in front of us. Um let's take them together, someone's selling fines.
I will make a motion. Sorry, uh for a seeker type two action combined with the single-stage site plan approval for twenty-three dash zero seven four at thirty-four sixty-four Sandy Beach Drive on the single-stage site plan approval. Lance, do we have any updates to conditions or new conditions?
Yeah, I have added uh seven. The seventh one is the landscape plan is to be updated to provide additional low-level shrubs, landscaping on the front side of the patio area. And it's to be shown on the plan's privacy.
And I was going to recommend that it be a condition that says the town attorney and town engineer are directed to prepare more detailed findings of that to be presented at the planning boards next meeting, for its review and approval. I've recommended you have that condition. We have a lot of specific claims here. Uh I think there is a, a potential for litigation. We have engineers who say one thing, multiple engineers who say another thing, and we should spell that out in findings of that, that can uh order a decision, whatever it may be, uh greater than is normal and necessary.
So I, I missed the prefacing that. You said that it should be discussed again at the next meeting?
No, we should, if you approve this.
Yeah.
Or deny it. One of the things you should do is about very detailed findings of that.
Oh.
Because you've got a lot of the near reports.
I got you, I got you.
Well, we'll present the findings at the next meeting, that will impact an approval or denial.
Okay, uh. Want to make sure Lance, you covered Jim's concern in your ordinance, right, or resolution? You did. ECB, uh we mentioned the plans. Your update said he wouldn't be putting favors in for the patio. Be being left proposed garages. Mr. Update, did you see the ECB's comments, recommendations at all? ECB recommends that the plans be changed, especially in the green and landscape, to show the tree being left by the proposed garage as it looks like is, it is being removed of the plans.
Yeah, no, no trees are being removed.
Okay. Uh ECB makes sure the demolition and construction phases of the way to old root zones of existing trees. So that's all trees on the property. And the permeable papers we mentioned, and they just be scared, scared, ECB. And you have your notices and you made a motion. I'm sorry, I got a second from Sky. First of all, discussions, do they? Anybody else? No? All fair?
I.
Post.
Thank you.
Okay, good luck.
Thank you very much. Do appreciate it.
Get off that water line. Okay. Uh record, let's move on to uh CPN. Two twenty-three, one twelve, uh attorney Whitbeck owns a property at fifty-two eighty-five Black Point Drive. Of course, he had a site plan approval to install some geo, geothermal pumps, systems. Uh I got somebody here representing attorney. Oh, I'm looking at your license, gotta be the guys. Wake up. Ah Jesse.
Yeah, Jesse Carson.
I gotta say, first of all, he put in my geotherm. Oh, yeah, yeah. And you're smiling?
Oh, yeah. How long ago?
Ten years.
Okay, so the, so the owner of the company, his name is also Jesse.
Yeah, yeah.
So that's my boss. So I, I've been with the company for six years, I didn't, I wasn't around then. That's cool.
Satisfying, Chris? Oh, yes. Okay, well, tell us what you're doing out of Black.
So we're proposing to drill um five hundred and fifty-foot bores in, what's, what that's going to be is uh, there's going to be three hundred feet of three-quarter inch HDP piping put down there, the U-bend. And um there's another site view that has it on, yeah.
You see it, let me know.
Okay, uh let's see. Site view, yeah, I think it would be that one, yep. That's ours, but then we also had another one submitted um on the site, on the, like a professional survey. Um probably yes, there you go. That was the original one that we submitted, was the first one. There it is. Yeah, so the house is being built, it's currently being built right here. And this is, you know, this is a gravel driveway right here that comes down. And what we're looking to do is put them off to the side, the hill kind of slopes down right here, just one, two, three, four, five in a row. And then this is just one trench, we call it header trench, where header pipe will come down and go to the five different wells and come to and from the house right there. And then the system is going to be two separate heat pumps inside. One to do um hydronic heating, in-floor radiant heating, the other one is to do air conditioning.
And the underground? Those heads are going to be underground?
Yes, yeah. Yeah, that's why I couldn't tell, because in the driveway. Yeah, everything will be uh completely underground, yeah.
So your limit of disturbances, any different than what was for the house, or just that, that bump out for the?
No, actually, the limit of disturbance hasn't changed.
Okay.
At all, um from the original plan. We're fitting it, fitting it into that area. Hoping to.
Jesse, would these wells be case wells?
They are going to be grounded, but they're not going to be cased. So what they do, well, they'll, they'll um, basically when they drill down, uh you know, they would have the case until they got down to bedrock, but given that. But given the area here, basically, it's a different type of drill and what they do is they, yeah, they fill it with ground.
Are you expecting to need a water table?
It's a good question. I don't know specifically if it's, you know, if it would hit the water table or not.
Get the question also with the, how quick would that route set?
Yeah, that's a good question too. I have to, I have to confer with the drilling company on that. Find out that answer.
So the construction is essentially drill and fill. And uh the surface as far as after the. Construction will essentially be. I agree, you said the caps are underground?
Yeah, so everything is about six feet underground, yeah. And then all that fill is put right back in where it came from. And then it'll just be gravel there when we're done.
Sounds pretty simple to me.
I think, I think the only concern that I would have, Chuck, in this is that there's nothing that's toxic that can make its way into the. So like, that's all. And that's, there are grouts, and having done this before myself, there are grouts that can. Get good and there are grouts that can be bad. And that's, I would request that we use a non-toxic grout for filling the vertical wells.
Good point. Okay, anybody else? Uh I'll seek a motion. Do we need a seeker even though it's an amended? Alright, we only need one motion. The amended site plan.
I'll move to uh X F C P N point three one one two. Site plan approval.
The land board, right?
Well, yeah, applicant is required to use a non-toxic grout. And the notes to be added to the plans.
There was a four.
I'll second.
We got the current, the most current date on the plan?
I circled it just to make sure.
Alright, got a motion? Second, hold favor. Yes, yeah.
They go house, the house looks good by the way, I've been down several times.
You had no wood delivery the other day when I was there. You're getting wood delivery when I was there. Okay, uh we have two requests for extensions. Since Sal is here in person, we'll take it first. Uh Sal is representing our friends over on two thirty-five. Thirty-five, stay root three sixty-four, good night. Uh and you're requesting a ninety day extension on your. Final phase one. Correct, yeah. That's how it reads. So how we, how we doing out there?
Good, um I believe we're waiting just on the county to respond for the um sewer extension. Um so, you know, we're, everything that we control has been done. Now we're just waiting on the. Uh agency responses similar to how we, we had that back during preliminary. Now we're experiencing the same delays for final now too, so. Um I was just checking with Brian, it's been over six months, so. You know, hopefully uh. You know, it should be like any day now. Every time we talk to them, it's like, oh, hopefully by the end of the week and then a couple of weeks goes by, so.
Um. You guys get a letter? We sent a letter. We, we sent a letter addressing each point of the resolutions, conditions.
The reason for the, the reason for the request, you mean?
Uh, yeah.
Yep.
That's what I did, run and send a letter.
I submitted under the other.
Okay.
I started, it's like three cloud permanent applications open for. Yes, separate.
Yeah, it was under the. That's cool.
Well, you're looking for that. I guess there were some hiccups out there on the construction. Yeah, I guess with the approval. Uh you've got approval from this board to break ground, yes. I think that's, I think that's a procedure, right? Yeah, there's, it's usually a separate approval, but irregardless, ground was broken. And uh I guess there were some concerns as far as uh. How it was broken and what was being, being done, but I, I think in talking to staff and. M R B and everyone involved that they were back on track.
Yeah, I think we're due to, oh, sorry.
No, I just wanted to clarify that, yeah, they had, they had requested from the town a greeting permit. Basically, and um to go out and start doing some earthwork. Uh they had submitted a, a plan that met that criteria, surety to cover the cost on that timeframe. Um a detailed outline of what it was that was going to be done as part of that. Um and that's what's been authorized by the town. Um and I believe as a result, there's been some, some issues with going maybe a little beyond that. I don't know all the details. But it's my understanding that that's being worked on uh with the town and quarter force officer probably provided an email to them yesterday too.
Yeah, we met out on the site. I even, I, I put my boots on and I walked the site into. Um Jim Fletcher is out there and M R B and. Um and I think just a couple of things were done out of order. And I, I think there was, you know, reasoning behind why it was done. I'm not really the construction mastermind here, but. I think the biggest issue was just that there wasn't. Proper communication before, you know, things were done. So there was just a uh. Hey, what's going on here? And so we all got together on the site, walked through and. Um yeah, and I think. We established the plan, uh you know, what needs to be done in the back contract.
I think it marks, marks on the case now, right?
Yeah, we got marks on the case, yeah.
And you're gonna keep a better. Eye on whoever it is. Uh who is in charge of construction, Sal?
Yeah.
And remind that person.
Correct.
That hey, when they say it's gotta be in this order, it better be in that order. The town's not gonna be so nice the next time.
Absolutely, absolutely. And yeah, this, like I said, they did have good intentions. I think it was because we were anticipating rain. So we were trying to stabilize the site if the pond dug out a little more before the rain came, but it was not. What was laid out on the plan, so. And I think Jim had indicated that if we had communicated that with him at a time, he would have gave us the green light, but. You know, that communication wasn't there, so.
Yeah, I heard you're, you're out there making pottery. You got a lot of clay.
Yeah, yeah, there's quite a bit of clay out there. Well, once you get through the first couple of feet, though, it's nice uh.
Alright, well, just keep an eye on our trees. Uh I, I guess.
There are none.
There aren't none?
Pretty extensive thing, a large diameter trees. I think that is something that has happened. The water system that was there has been uh disrupted and redirected at this point. So and I guess to, to your credit, one thing that has happened is up by the road, they're keeping that very good coverage.
Yeah, I just.
And that, that, that is actually keeping improvement for the heat that aspect of it. But yeah, many of the steps. There are large diameter trees that.
Well, we agreed anything of us in the right away in the road. Then I think as we get into the site plans for the individual lots. They will go to P R C for review.
Yeah, there's none of that.
Correct, yeah, and then we'll.
Right, but that's all for the upper portion. That's all east of the steep slope portion that's in. That we were talking about saving the larger diameter trees and all that.
Phase, phase one was conditioned that. Does give the purview. To the P R C Order Group Committee. Basically, the understanding that the concern was. A plan would be submitted and they would verify whether or not that plan was in confluence with the approved. Meaning, was there any changes that were made in the building location that would. Require additional trees to be provided or additional trees to be removed that wasn't already discussed with the board, so now.
Mark, is your concern that the trees being removed are in a violation or not in compliance? Okay. I consider that a formal complaint made by a member of the public to the town development office. Please fill out a complaint form and investigate it. Investigate the project for compliance, look for plans and town.
Okay. Meanwhile.
Yeah, yeah.
Meanwhile, we have a request, a first request ninety days, which is. Uh all things being equal, for proper reasons, we usually approve it and uh. Someone wants to make a motion to approve the ninety day extension. To January twenty-third.
Make that motion to approve the suspension. Till January twenty-third.
For the discussion. Okay, hold favor. Okay. You're good, so sewer is the only thing hanging, hanging in.
Yeah, it's, 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 we submitted on the third. That's the original set. We finally got a review on September twenty-fourth. And we've been back and forth with them and the last response, the last comment response we sent in was like over four.
That's the letter you're.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, it's just months, sacred forever.
It's going back to shot up here. Okay. Thanks, guys. Appreciate, appreciate you sticking around.
Absolutely.
Good to see you again.
Everybody.
Alright, my last extension request we have is from uh. Our friends at Edgemere Development Corporation, it's the property of Parkside Drive. Uh they're asking for another ninety days. Someone here representing Edgemere?
That's a negative.
He was in and out a couple of times. We have been having technical issues.
Okay, well. The issue is, it's a. Request for a third extension, which we are. Usually reluctant to grant, so it's really extenuating circumstances. We want to hear what those circumstances were.
That's why.
To do with the same. Yes, well, it's, it's probably financial. Yeah, getting their grant money, getting their loans. I think that's the whole issue with. Is, as it is, we pre-see. What do we want to do?
What's our precedent? You know, we talked about it.
This is gonna be our second one.
And was it? When we discussed the first one or a meeting after the first one, it was, there's no restrictions in our code that say. We can't do this, but we don't want it.
What are the consequences?
Right, right.
It's gotta reapply.
Oh, so actually, it's what we're just discussing. Refusal to grant this extension request just means they have to reapply. Um there should be, because you can knock it a very thorough review. Absolutely nothing. That will change. They'll pay. About two hundred and fifteen bucks application fee. Uh it will eat up the development office and the planning review committee and M R B's time.
We'll start to get through the form-based code procedure.
You'll have to go through all the form-based code procedure to arrive at the exact same. Situation as granting an extension request. Um you know, if this was a terribly controversial. Application where neighbors were out with pitchforks and. Uh lanterns, I might give you different advice, but it just, I, I see it as a. What about the impact of eating up of town resources? What, what about the impact on to changes that we already recognize are needed for form-based code? So are, are there any concerns related to that? So one of, one of those that we, that transference. We've already recognized that that's not been set up appropriately.
You mean window transparency?
Yes, that, that's one example. And as I understand, there are going to be meant things. These are anecdotal comments with people in the town. But there'll be meant things that will need to change with form-based code.
Yes.
Yeah. Is that a reason to not kick the can?
But me opening the, the door back onto those thoughts.
That's a good question. So. You already made your decisions under the, the form-based code that exists today. I'm gonna go ahead and that, that it's going to be the exact same form-based code that exists ninety days from today. Uh I, I think you raise a very good point, Mark. That. When that becomes imminent. What you just said is, is an absolute consideration and the prime example. The opposite example of why we should just grant an extension to avoid wasting resources. Um but unless there's a reason not to grant the extension, for example, circumstances changed. Uh either the zoning's changed, the zoning codes changed. You know, uh. Someone put a uh highway through there and, you know, not the same site as it was. But yeah, we have multiple that are coming from this. So this is all going to hit our proverbial fan. This winter anyways. We have applications already submitted. Can you just email me the names of those? So I can take a look at it.
It'd like to be a little bit more.
You know, we were hopeful to get a applicant or a representative to explain the reasons why. The conditions of approval couldn't have been addressed because I don't, I don't recall any of those conditions being so substantial. Uh of, of cost, you know, it's, it's just a change in a plan. Give the plan sign and then that would create an approval basically. For a two-year window of time for it, have to go through some similar process to what we're doing now. So I didn't, I guess I'm just not totally convinced I understand. The reason for not being able to get the plan signed. Now, I understand the, the issues that they have with funding, but I didn't quite understand the reasons for the plans not being submitted.
Yeah, I'm just trying to avoid us, I'm wishing we had done something different, that's all.
Anything I'm thinking is the plan might change. Based on the funding requirements, because look what happened with Crete View. They had to reduce the number of units. Maybe Edgemere has to go from a hundred. Ten units, whatever they have in that, or less smaller size to get the funding. So then they'd have to.
No.
No?
Uh they're looking for. That Crete View's. Original proposal. Well, I guess I can't guarantee that, my guess is.
It's probably not the same funding, but it could be a funding issue.
And it's not, you know, Crete View came up with its proposal five years ago. It's. And Edgemere came up with this proposal one year ago, so I think they're more current on what the state's looking for than what's available, what. Amounts of money.
We could do a temporary extension, thirty days and ask them to come back if you want that explanation as to. I mean, we did have time.
I don't. Or I'm good either way, this, I can understand and support both.
Well, it would be nice to. Know what their hangups, I mean, what's, what's hanging them up?
To grant the ninety condition on. What are your condition? Above resolution, single stage. Hereby approved for one first ninety day extension.
Sir, third.
Subject to the following issue, I had a written application on it before. December one, two thousand twenty-three. Of the reasons the site plan hasn't been signed. And uh. And uh. Expected date at which it will, on which it will be submitted for extension.
Right, that was the latest statement?
Yeah.
See you.
Till then, spray that.
No.
Can we rescind that extension if we don't like?
On the very violation of a condition and what did we learn earlier? Our town code has a thing that says violation of conditions of approval is violation.
Sure. Before you do that, I just want to make sure I follow this thing, because you said thirty days, but I, you won't. I want to know, I'm trying to talk up with the board.
I mean, December twelfth is our next. Is our December name.
He said thirteen, we'll give him to the thirtieth, so then it's part of. Thirteen.
Well, what do you want to do? Do you want to do ninety? Want to do thirty? Uh, do you want to put a ninety with?
Thirty days.
Ninety with condition, the condition that they get gives an explanation as to what's hanging them up?
I would say that, so he didn't have to come back. We don't have to. Let's do it again. Ninety with that condition, give us.
You're about to say most supportive. Do the question as to why it can't be the guilty.
I'd like all to say too, to be the last almost too.
Yeah, but condition number two, this should be absent extraordinary circumstances. This will be the last. Do we say?
No, I'm just. Have the goodness of our hearts.
Yeah. Because we make the last.
Because it's getting you know. This is our gift to you.
What's the?
Alright. Did I get a motion?
Sorry.
What's the?
We're we're doing ninety.
Is it ninety with the conditions to summarize and to be like?
Five, ninety days, two conditions. Amanda's about to second it, right?
I'm I'm trying to keep up here. Okay.
Ninety days with two conditions.
Ninety two conditions. Okay. I concur, a second.
Okay, motion second for the discussion if not. All favor?
Aye.
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 Approve. I'll approve that.
Okay, it is records four one, current?
Yeah.
Resolution is four to one. Okay, uh, board business.
I have other business.
Okay, let me do the minutes.
Okay.
And we got a couple releases, get them out of the way.
Oh, sorry.
And you you can, you can.
Sorry.
Be our. Uh, minutes twenty fourth, October. Give me a motion.
No movement.
Okay, anybody have any further corrections to the posted minutes? If not. All favor?
Aye.
Okay. Uh, sure, we have two.
Uh. Sure, I did not provide resolutions to that. Now, the resolutions are standard in my mind, but. I didn't go up to the boards and decide. I just apologize. I didn't realize that I just. Right, insurance.
We'll get along with that. That'll be. Mark, want to see him?
I was like. I was, I know it's mine.
No, no, no. It's your prerogative.
But I did have, I had an opportunity to talk to our code enforcement officer to make sure that they were done as well. Since I confirmed it, both signatures on these, I'll make a motion for, uh, let's see, I don't have this. C N twenty twenty one dash fifty five, block residents. Uh, make motion that we approve their release of eighteen thousand five hundred three hundred and fifty two, eighteen thousand three hundred and fifty two dollar charity.
All second, all favor?
Aye.
Who's? Not next.
Also, many signatures from our town employees for C P N twenty 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 three, that twenty one. Fifty one and fifty three, the Ash residents in tram home addition and new tram system at four six. Two nine West Lake Road, Center of sixteen. Uh, release of charity in the amount of nine thousand one hundred thirty dollars and forty cents.
One second. Motion second? All favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, uh, last thing I have is uh. Arrestment training, make sure uh. If you haven't done it, you get it done before. I think Lindsey said it seventeen. I really wish you'd stop bugging me about that.
You're getting her ass.
I'm arresting you about the arrest. Get it done or else.
Oh, yeah.
Spread it here. Uh, okay, that's all I have.
Uh, board business. One, uh, Jared Lusk, uh, the attorney from Nixon's body represented Blue Sky. Cell power, who was in here for a special use permit. Um, sent a letter that I thought had been distributed to the board and would be on tonight's agenda. Um, he's requesting. Um, and if you'll recall, he actually raised the issue during the meeting. Um, there's a town code section. Two twenty dash sixty. A nineteen requires that the site, the special use permit expire every two years. And he went back to his uh. Client and their fu- bankers and uh, that will not allow them to get adequate financing, which I understand. Uh, and so they proposed. Uh, a revision to the special use permit conditions. Um. And I actually uh. Don't disagree. Um, and would suggest going along with the revisions and some punching it up that I've done. Um, they essentially said. In it, instead of requiring renewal every two years, say. Proof of structural inspections of the tower shall be performed and proof of same delivered to the town. Every two years and then. Uh, the security, the bond would increase by ten percent every five years. So that, which is one of the reasons it's supposed to renew every two years is so that. Planning work can re-review the amount of the decommissioning bond. Increases ten percent every five years, that's two percent a year. I don't know if that's adequate. If you. Want to make it more, I'm sure they'll agree to that. Uh, and then I added, proof of valid security bond shall be delivered. To the town every two years, failure to provide the documentation, including the inspections. Acceptable that the town has provided in this document. Shall result in revocation of this special use permit and then granting of a waiver of that section of code. Kristin, can you make sure that gets distributed and appears on the next agenda? Uh, I'm just giving you the background so you know what you're looking at. That's what they're requesting. Uh, I've talked to him. I don't necessarily oppose it. It's your decision. I let it think about it in for seventy years a little bit late, but. It's really up to you.
Is there a way to put wording on it?
So it's required.
Would I make the bond?
No, because it's automatically renewing bonds we've wanted set.
I guess. I mean, inflation right now is three point seven percent. Two, that's today. Last year at this time, it was seven twenty percent. Normally, it's eighty four.
Okay, uh. Annual. Increase. To match inflation. How about that?
Perfect.
I think with this one player, any other of this?
No.
Okay.
But and it can go on under other business on the next.
I know we kicked that around that the meeting.
Yeah, I know.
I thought I resolved it.
Yeah, I thought we did.
And I think Jared thought we resolved it and then he went back and the people who make the actual decisions about. Is this the exact language? We're willing to provide a million dollars to you to build this thing. So no way, we're not going to give you that much money if you got to renew it under. That's what I think happened. It's, I, you know.
I thought it was inspection. Inspection and she found to be in non-compliance, then it would be, but I mean, as long as it was compliance. Which is keep. Rotate, uh, moving forward every two years with inspection.
Yeah, so. He's asking for what you thought it was?
Yeah.
And I don't think I'll have a problem next week, next, uh, week.
Their letter goes, Mr. Murphy, your updates, your updates.
I'll send something.
Alright, well, we'll kick it around. Okay.
I wanted to talk to the board first before I did that, so that.
Can we stop for a second? This is the solar one. Will remain remain in effect for the current and future owner of the premises with no requirement for.
The solar one is different. So town code section two twenty dash sixty two. Point two. A something, just says it's for solar, it's renewable, or it's 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 it lasts forever. The cell code, cell tower code still has a section, so you got to renew this every two years. Now, the nitpicker in me loves that. I absolutely love it. Never going to run the risk of that bond expiring or not being paid off today or being not enough. But you also have to be realistic and this is cell tower that everyone wants. We don't want to prevent a juice by me being a nitpicker. And what they're proposing with my modestation is perfectly adequate. It's just a little bit harder, but the town's going to have to monitor it instead of knowing and never thinking about it.
And that, that's another section of code that you have to, that then makes that up as well.
You can do that. But I, I'll, I'll prepare something. Um. Uh. For your review and approval at the next meeting unless anybody adjusts.
Yeah, we got it. The agenda.
Yeah. Yeah.
Alright, if anything else, uh.
Um, you may have noticed uh, that the town manager, unfortunately, has. Uh, informed the town board that he's leaving.
Yeah, what'd you do?
Uh, I I wouldn't want to work with me either. No, uh. I, he's, he's got a great opportunity in Texas, which is where his wife's family is. Um. And I think it'll work. I think it will be just a great fit for him and I know he's excited about it. Uh, just to pass on, I know the town board is already think of, thinking about this. Uh. Has scheduled an emergency meeting to start a. Uh, recruitment search and hiring process to and plan for the transition, just so you guys are aware is interested.
How much time, how much time do we?
Uh, he's leaving. Early January, I think January eighth or January twelve, but that's just off the top of my head. I don't think he's leaving before that, but I just. Don't know. It's.
Yeah.
It's the first or second week of January.
Let's get done for the town.
Right, I think it's. But he's obviously gonna um. Work with uh, Jared Simpson and the town board on the transition. He's the guy who knows where all the keys are and all the codes are. And how to do this job, so he'll set that up well. But the town board is is already working on it, just to let you know. And the same uh, holds true for. Uh, beloved town clerk who uh, is also leaving. Uh, in the near future and the town board is. I'm gonna start working on that as well. I think Jean's already. Been setting up for the transition though. Um, I know she'll need to break county clerk. Um, and as much as a loss as it is for the town. Uh, good thing for her and for the county because we need somebody in there. That's all I've got.
Okay, anything else from the board?
Just a, I sent him a couple pictures. He's coming back at thirty five, thirty five. Because it's a panorama, so probably.
Thirty five, thirty, oh, three sixty four.
So what we have stated is that he could, that they could clear enough to put in their road. There's two pictures. This is the entire base side road.
Twenty six lane road, yeah.
I mean, thankfully, they did save of the willow tree. But that water that you're looking at used to be that moving body of water that now has gravel stops and everything in there too. You'll notice in the other, you can clearly see the uh. The mobile home park, the saving grace, and I'm sure this was not unintentional, is that at the road, there's heavy tree cover still, so you can't see what else went on. But. I hope they keep the tree covered the road. I know they won't, but that would be great if they did, because then it would protect our future. So they, they clear cut in this.
This should be included as part of the complaint and treated like any other complaint. Uh, submitted for investigation and if there's a violation. You were like, should.
Okay, uh, what what is the recommendation as planning board member, not as citizen, planning board member, when I see something like this? Right, I have shared some of this information. Uh, I had not taken it to Mike. It's probably what I should have done and shared my concerns, but I'm I'm looking for guidance on that.
It's a good question. Uh, you guys are the ones who know what is supposed to be happening. Probably even better than Mike because you're the ones who hashed it out and wrote the conditions and, you know. And, you know.
And I know any.
He looks at them, but not.
Any civil engineer says, yeah, it all has to go.
Uh, but so, Mark, it's a very good question. You guys are, you know, uh, early warning and early detection systems. Because you know what's supposed to be happening on these sites and it's happened in the past, you know, hey, they said they were going to do this and that's not what they're doing. Um, absolutely call Mike, Mike uh. Murphy, the town has a system of, and then it's really just treated like a complaint. Um. For it and the town has policy, investigate complaints that somebody, I don't know who goes out there. Says, is this what's happening? Is this in violation of something? And we, you know, then they ensure. Um, this board, after you grant the approval and your extensions, doesn't have any authority to do anything about it. Um, the town development office really does. We have a lot of uh. Methods by which to ensure compliance. Um, and.
Other than the applicant has to come back in front of us. For subsequent, for subsequent reviews and approvals. And if we know there's an issue with previously approved, I think we'll be a lot sterner harder on it.
I don't think that's unreasonable at all.
And that is a huge concern. Having, having seen their other work in, down at Penyan, I was concerned then, this, this is a. Brandon, I, I know there's a perception of bias, but. Because I do live across the street from this, so I look at it. I look at it from a first perspective of, are they doing what they said they were doing? And I feel like I'm going back to.
Well, you're looking at it. I have done this many times. I asked Kirsten, I sent a memo to Kirsten. Um, Ash, um. Who's the planning board person? Sarah.
Sarah.
Kirsten, Sarah. And my person. Yeah, and I said, I spelled it out. I've done it many times.
But I mean, you're the ones, I mean, you forward over these plans.
Yeah.
May, may.
Um, and how, I mean, it took.
Didn't get any results.
Six months to come up with the decision on, you know. So you guys know more about this than anybody.
They're, they're violating two different programs. They're violating the grading permit that was issued by the town, which is why there's a stop work order. And then they potentially could be in violation of the flame work conditions of approval, which is a separate issue that sounds like that'll have to be resolved.
Yeah.
Whenever that comes, but right now there's a stop work order on the grading. Because they were not permitted to do full site clearance, which is why we held them to a road into a standard. They went above and beyond, stop work order, there's fines associated with that. There's a process associated with that, which doesn't, I believe is working through, but I think to mark to your point. Bring up the point, procedurally, I think the town needs to be aware that there's potential violations on the planning board. Conditions of approval that we have to look to, see how we resolve that.
I'll talk to Mike tomorrow.
Mark, I forwarded it to Kristin and Mike Murphy's.
You don't really need to.
Mark, I would, I would advise an email a little. Yeah, I'll follow up, because that's a good chain of.
That's also better than Kristen saying, hey, another said this, where Mark said this. Yeah, then Mike says, I'm on my way out the door and can you remind me later? Oh, another address. Chain of all that are.
Good points, good points. That's right, I was, I was being polite by saying we had a hiccup.
Yeah.
He knew what we were talking about.
Well, that's why I said it so he can tell his father, but hey, they're not going to be nice to them.
You're, you're going to be back here again, so.
Well, he doesn't have the control.
Hope you're right. Okay. Amanda, quick.
Yes, I'll make a motion adjourned at nine oh nine.
One second. Favor?
Aye.